Welcome to the August 25, 2025 Board Meeting. Those who are able to stand, if you would please, to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Jordan, can you do a roll call for attendance, please?
Roll call for the August 25 regular meeting. Trustee Dotson.
Present.
Trustee Dotson's present. Or present, present. Vice Chair Walcott.
Here.
Vice Chair Walcott is present. Trustee Reyes.
Present.
Trustee Reyes is present. Trustee Daley.
Present.
Trustee Daley is present. Secretary Miller.
Present.
Secretary Miller is present. And Chair Swanson.
Here.
Chair Swanson is present. There's six people in attendance. You have a quorum.
Okay, are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Yes, John?
I have one change I'd like to add. I guess it's going to be 1.73 would be the addition of Larry Ford to the applicant pool for appointment to as a member of this board.
Okay, we've got a, we need a second on that, don't we? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to add Larry Ford to the interviews for the trustee and seconded. Any discussion?
I'd request, I'd request you share with the board your investigation and discussion with Larry Ford today.
Well, we can do that. I talked with the chief and she said that two people showed up on Friday. As of course you know, the school was closed on Friday and they wanted to put in an application. They were told that schools closed. The lady left and never came back. I've been told that Larry Ford was here on Monday to try to submit his paperwork for that and he was turned away by HR. So, pardon me? Yeah, yeah, the deadline was Saturday at, I believe, 8:00 PM or 5:00, 5:00 PM and so they turned him away. John's brought up the fact that he was here on Friday to submit his paperwork and wasn't able to. I will take a board action to, to let him interview. It's a board decision. So, that being said, is there any discussion? Yes, Art?
I've got a question. Right now, the discussion is whether to add this to the agenda, not the merits of whether Mr. Ford should be allowed on, if I'm understanding this correctly.
It's to add it to the agenda, correct?
Okay, all right.
Any other discussion? Okay, can we have a roll call vote? Diane?
Roll call vote on the motion to add as an agenda item Larry Ford to be able to be interviewed as a candidate for the open board trustee position. Trustee Daley?
Yes.
Trustee Miller? Trustee Walcott? Trustee Reyes? Trustee Dotson?
Yes.
Chair Swanson?
Yes.
The vote is four to two and it passes.
So, will that go on 1.73? Is that where we're going to put that?
It is on at 1.73 on the agenda pursuant to trustee Daley's motion.
Thank you. Okay, any other additions to the agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded. Any discussion on that? Yes?
You have several items that are by law, by law approval. If we are going to suggest amendments to those, do you want those now or do you want to wait till we get to the discussion on those items?
Uh, it would be when we, when we read them, I would imagine. That'd be the proper thing to do, John. Okay. Okay, so we've motioned to accept the agenda, been seconded. Any more discussion? Okay, can we have a roll call vote on that?
On the motion to? On the motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Trustee Walcott?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Dotson?
Yes.
Trustee Daley?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Chair Swanson?
Yes.
The agenda is adopted as amended.
Okay, moving right along, recognition of guest. Shonda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would first like to have a special recognition of Robert Matthews. Robert is the Vice President of Student Academic and Workforce Success and I am very pleased to announce that Robert has been selected and appointed to a term as the Vice President of Finance for the National Council of Workforce Education. As many of you know, very well deserved. As you know, Robert has spent a tremendous amount of his career here of over 28 years at Mott Community College, creating and building the workforce education program here, which is so highly successful and, and highly valuable to our students. So, thank you and congratulations, Robert. I did want to tell a little bit more about the National Council for Workforce Education. It's a national organization that advances workforce education excellence at our nation's community colleges through bold ideas, innovative programs, and impactful partnerships that drive economic opportunity. So, Robert, you have a long history of doing all of those things. I know you'll be very successful in this new position and congratulations again. Next, I would like to take a few minutes to recognize our staff and faculty that were, were also recognized this past Thursday morning at our All-Employee Fall Kickoff Breakfast that we held at the Genesis Banquet Center. It was a wonderful morning and we had a lot of testimonies from students talking and sharing with us their, their extraordinary student experiences at Mott. And in addition to hearing from our students, we had the special time to recognize the recipients of the President's Commitment to Excellence Award. The purpose of this award is to recognize our Mott employees who have done something specific and significant to contribute to the creation of an extraordinary student experience. They exhibit excellence in everything they do, exceed expectations, and consistently go above and beyond. These are employees who have shown exemplary service outcomes, have had significant accomplishments or achievements or contributions to our, to our Mott family. And these are employees who are innovative, creative, and consistently bring forth new ideas that, once they've been implemented, have improved the way that we work. These are also employees who have demonstrated significant community impact. So, I would like to take a moment to read the names of each of the employees who were the recipients of this highly regarded award. If you are here with us this evening, could you please stand and come down to the, the front row here? Ms. Ann Rennie, Manager of Grants with the Office of Institutional Advancement. In the office of the President, Eric Rogers, Lieutenant Director of LERTA and Public Safety Training. From the Student Academic and Workforce Success Division, Jessica Bodos Esperanza, full-time instructor and also leads our international student program. Bethany Williams, Administrative Assistant in the peer. Angela Bonham, full-time instructor. Jill Brightling, peer tutoring coordinator. Gregory Schaefer, currently retired and instructor. Annette Berman, full-time instruction. Jenna Andrews, full-time instruction. Elizabeth Lamble, adjunct instructor. Michelle Dunham, full-time instructor. Dr. Anar Guru, Dean of Health and Human Services. Sheila Johnson Gooden, Lead Resource Specialist. Lynn Wondery, full-time instructor. Michael Stodgill, full-time instructor. Gary Campione, College Access Representative. Natasha Fisher, Coordinator for Academic and Industry Testing. Kathleen Custer, Financial Aid Specialist for Outreach and Recruitment. Daryl Pedway, Adult Reentry Navigator. Lisa Lovas, Student Success Specialist. Matthew Petriella, Administrative Assistant for Technology. Lourdes White, Workforce Economic Development Coordinator. Jessica Bixel, Coordinator for Scholar Programs. And in our Finance and Administrative Services Division, Mr. Timothy Broomefield, Supervisor of Facilities Services Operations. Ernie Johnson, Supervisor, Facility Service Operations. Mr. James Allen Jr., groundskeeper. Dewan Carroll, groundskeeper. Andrew Colka, groundskeeper. David Miller, groundskeeper. Eric Owens, groundskeeper. Alexander Toth, groundskeeper. And finally, Cornell Jones, custodian. Please join me in giving these exemplary employees a round of applause.
Thank you. Jordan, is there any communications?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there are two memos that are in your agenda packet, one from the, one from Schwartz Creek, I'm sorry, the city of Schwartz Creek, Downtown Development Authority, and then as well as the city of Grand Blank.
Okay, well, thank you. How about comments from the public?
There's one public comment submitted by Bobby Walton of Davis, Michigan, on the topic of management, business versus government.
As I have mentioned before, my specialty is management. It's what I did for many years and I did it within government. I did it as a business owner. I did it as a consultant and as a board member of several nonprofit corporations. The one thing that I came to talk to you tonight is the difference between management of business and management of public institutions like Mott College. A lot of what I see happening currently is bringing too much of the business model of management into Mott College business. It doesn't belong here. There are many things that people need to know about managing, things that depend upon public law, public money, public institutions that serve the public. And I've spoken to you so many times about the public interest. In fact, I have said to you that I believe that's what I represent and that's why I have been coming to talk to you at every board meeting for over two years. Because if the public is not represented, then we don't have full democracy and if the public doesn't participate, it's often because it's been discouraged from participating. When you've got management in an institution like Mott College that is composed of people who don't have experience with public institutions, they don't know the things that they need to know. I spoke with a former board member of this board who told me that when she was first elected to this board, she had never had experience in working on a board that had to follow public law, that what she had done before was in the private sector and she did not know exactly how to respond to what was required of her. She would say, why can't we do this? And then she was told, you can't because of this. And she said she needed a pretty good grounding and tutoring on exactly how to comply with public law when it came to carrying out her duties as a board member for Mott College. And I feel the same thing needs to be said about the people who are currently being brought into the management of this college. And that needs to be a consideration. When the evaluation by the public says that they're not happy with the way things are going because they don't feel that what's currently being done not only meets the needs of the students and the community, but might not even be in compliance with the law and the management of public institutions. One of the things that I observed several years ago when we had a governor in Maryland, Governor Snyder, who came from the business community. And there were many things he said and many things he stood for that were not wrong, but they would not represent the compliance with public openness and with remembering that you can't make behind closed doors deals. You have to actually go through the process as is required by public law and public process. So, some of the things he made mistakes in doing were not because he intentionally did it, he just did not know it because he had never been that way before. I think that what we need to do is to continue paying attention to the direction that the management of the college is taking regarding bringing in a public sector interest, I mean a private sector interest in a public sector college. I was listening to a discussion on the radio as I came in and they were talking about an analysis of the government's taking of 10%, I believe it was, of Intel stock or control of the Intel Corporation. The comment that was made was that this reflects a lot of what China's been doing for many years and that's government ownership or government intrusion in public business. It goes the other way, too. We don't want to have business controlling public institutions. Although many of the things we did when I was working in government was to provide partnerships, where there were many things that we did that brought the business sector into what we were doing, but they were not making policy, they were not making budgetary decisions, and they were not doing things that impacted on how the taxpayers were treated. So, I guess my message to you tonight is I want to remind you that this is something that's important to remember and as you go forward in setting policy or setting your budget or deciding on how you're going to spend public funds, that you notice that the management that you're practicing has to be according to public requirements. Thank you.
All right, item seven, consent agenda. That would consist of the regular meeting minutes of the 27th of June and the minutes for the Committee of the Whole, that was August 5th and 6th. So, I would entertain a motion to accept the, to, well, we've just got a vote on, don't we? I need a motion to vote on it.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from June 27th, August 5th, and August 6, 2025.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to accept and a second, any discussion? No discussion? Well, that's good to know then. Okay, can we take a roll call vote, please?
On the motion to approve the consent agenda. Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Daley?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Walcott?
Yes.
Trustee Dotson?
Yes.
Chair Swanson?
Yes.
Is passed unanimously.
Okay, item eight, the approval of minutes for the closed session from the 27th of June.
So moved.
Second.
I'm passing out copies of those closed minutes and they should be handed back once it's addressed. Thank you.
Okay, we had a motion to accept the minutes from the special meeting and it was seconded? We had a motion, yes, yes. Okay, so, roll call vote?
I second it.
Can you, you did, okay.
Motion to approve the closed session minutes from the June 27, 2025 meeting. Trustee Walcott?
Yes.
Trustee Dotson?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Daley?
You said the 20, what did you say? I said the meeting is for the 27th, correct?
The closed session was June 27, 2025.
I wanted to abstain because I wasn't there. Yes.
Minutes are approved. The trustees could hand them back to me. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could the record reflect that my absence at both the regular meeting on the, on June 27th and on the special board meeting, or the special closed session we had, was due to the fact that I was representing the board at the nursing graduation ceremony?
Sure.
Thank you.
board policy. Wendy? Wendy?
The policy committee has met twice since our last regular Board of Trustees meeting on July 9th and August 14th. As you can see from tonight's agenda, there are five policies which have been recommended for approval by the full board, three for the second reading and two for the first reading. The policy committee is working on amending the college's hazing policy, as well as reviewing all the policies related to the committees. And then our next meeting is Wednesday, August 27th, at 3:00 PM.
Thank you. Item 209 would be board policy 1325 complaint responses, and I'll handle that one. Since my becoming the chair of the trustees, two formal complaints pursuant to board policy 1325 Code of Ethics were lodged against Board Trustee Janet Couch. Board policy provides for the chair solely to address and investigate any such complaints. Usually, a complaint against a trustee would only become public if action by the full board was justified. Action by the full board in connection with the complaints against trustee Couch is not warranted. However, these specific complaints were made public, and I promise to make the results of my investigation public, and that's what I'm doing here tonight. I also must add that my report on these two complaints was delayed due to the need to involve legal counsel. As anyone who has been following the recent history of the board, they know there has been a change in the position of board attorney over the past few months. However, once board attorney DeWitt was retained, he was able to provide consent to me on these matters. Also, in antrum, trustee Couch has resigned her position at MCC as trustee as she has moved from the school district. Even so, I felt it was important to give the report in public since it not only impacts former trustee Couch's reputation, but the conduct and operation of the board going forward. Okay, I will address the alleged trustee Couch post from February 6th. I received a complaint from five of the MCC's union regarding content that trustee Janet Couch allegedly posted to her Facebook account from 2015 to 2018. Therefore, as I looked into the matter, I note that trustee Couch disavowed ever making the post in question and said, and she informed me rather, that her Facebook account had been hacked numerous times over the year. Without deciding the question of whether trustee Couch made these posts, I do know that the allegedly inappropriate content in question predates trustee Couch's term, which began in 2019. Board policy 1325, the Code of Ethics, governs the conduct of board members during their service as a board member, not conduct that predates their term. Moreover, my experience, I have not found trustee Couch to be in any way a racist or homophobic. Even more fundamentally, I am aware of no basis by which the board would act to disenfranchise the voters with respect to their election of trustee Couch. Excuse me. Board policy 1325 expressly invest in me, the chairperson, discretion to take this complaint to the full board for consideration, or to define or to decline to do so. Based on the above facts and considerations, I've decided not to take this matter to a full board for consideration, and therefore, that matter is closed. Then I have a complaint made by trustee Daley for conflict of interest for Janet Couch. His, let's see, I received -- his complaint stated that she should not have voted to extend the contract over to President Richardson Snell because of the alleged conflict of interest purportedly involving trustee Couch and the investigation by previous board chair Everman last fall, who found there was no violation of the board policy and declined according to the discretion expressly provided to the chair under board policy 1325 to take the matter to the entire board. The board has several times decided that trustee Couch is not prohibited from voting with respect to matters relating to the presidential contract, including reratified its decision to extend the contract over to President Snell on May 19th, 2025. Board policy invest in me, the chairperson, the power to review any relative evidence and determine whether to take the complaint to the full board. Because no new facts have been presented in the latest complaint, I decline to bring the complaint to the full board, so this matter is also closed. Yes?
I'm a bit confused because my understanding from the time I was sitting in the room when it took place was that then-chairperson Everman refused to accept the complaint, the acknowledgement of the complaint, because it wasn't in writing, and that there was no subsequent investigation. If there was an investigation, then I'd like to see a copy of it.
Well, I was informed that there was an investigation done and that he had concluded that there was no conflict of interest.
He denied the complaint because it was not in writing.
Well.
There was no subsequent investigation because he did not receive the complaint.
Well, then I --
Then my complaint is the first time this has been brought before the board as a written complaint.
I will let the new board attorney handle that.
He received a report from the interim president at the time, Shonda Richardson Snell, raising the matter. He investigated the matter himself and concluded that it did not rise to the level of something that he should take to the board. We were brought in to offer an opinion as to whether that examination by the chair, Chair Everman at the time, was consistent with the board's procedures. And we gave our opinion that exactly that had occurred. In other words, that the chair had acted consistently with the board's procedures. I would add that the matter was addressed in the Ingham County Circuit Court decision recently, in which also the judge noted that the chair had done exactly that. So the recitation of facts, as I understand it, as I understand them, and we've looked at it very carefully, that the chair has provided today is accurate.
Yes, John?
My understanding in reading the opinion of your colleague, and I've forgotten her name. What was it?
Lynn McGuire.
McGuire's, in this, was it relayed, the conflict of interest occurred at a point in time where trustee Couch had knowledge of the transaction. And that, in fact, she had knowledge of the real estate transaction prior to the vote.
That's not my understanding. The opinion that was offered by Ms. McGuire was that the chair was within the rights described for the chair in deciding the self-generated report and then investigating the matter, as I just described. That was the purpose and effect of her opinion.
Have you seen an investigatory report?
I've seen the report in which --
No, go ahead.
In which Ms. McGuire described exactly what I just said, whether that constitutes an investigatory report is semantics. She described exactly what the chair did in receiving the self-generated information from the interim president and then deciding as chair under the applicable board policy.
But the chair refused to accept a written complaint on this. Chair Everman?
The chair decided the matter after gathering the facts based upon the self-generated report by the interim president herself. And I don't know that he refused a written report. I'm not saying that he did not, I'm not aware that that is the case.
I can assure you that was the case. I was about three feet from it.
I'm not saying it's not true. I wasn't there. I will say this, when he received the information, he considered the matter as a potential conflict of interest under the board's policy and decided that pursuant to his authority as to whether to raise the matter and take it to the entire board, he should not. And then, as the chair today has described, the matter was revisited at least twice after that.
Are there any of these recitations or the subsequent investigations, is there anything in writing?
As I said, the -- Ms. McGuire provided a description of what I just indicated the board chair did, and she provided it to the board. It does exist. So, yes.
So you're saying that her legal opinion constituted an investigation?
The investigation was conducted by the chair herself. She described the events that led to her opinion, including that investigation.
Do you have anything from the chair at that time that is tantamount to an investigation that's in writing?
I'm not, I did not write the opinion, so I don't know whether in interviewing the chair at the time, there was such a thing. Is anyone else aware?
That's, that's true. John, what's the basis for you to ask for that report?
I don't have to give you the basis. I can ask as a trustee.
Okay. Well, you know, John, if you're more than willing to submit another complaint, this was my finding on this one, and if you want to file another complaint, go right ahead.
I'm just trying to understand what, how you reached the decisions you did. Because so far, all I'm hearing is secondhand information.
I was told by the former chair that investigation was done. It's been reiterated, we've talked, how many times have we talked about this? Several.
Did those conversations involve the chair, the previous chair?
Mine did with him, yes.
Okay, so I'm looking for a written investigation. That's, that's, there should be some record of this. If the requirement is that I have to submit a complaint in writing for it to be considered, we should be making the decision, the investigation should be taking place before the decision is made to discard it. Okay, so I'm looking for the evidence for what's that, who made that? And all I'm hearing so far is basically Everman did it, and we don't have anything in writing to prove it one way or the other.
Well, I, Jordan, there's no record of this, correct?
I have no documentation or any correspondence of anything from Chair Everman that there was an investigation or anything like that. To my knowledge, nothing came through to me, and I can only speak for myself.
So they were a little lax on record-keeping.
So the question should be then also posed to the clerk at that time and the assistant clerk at that time, if they're aware of anything.
Well, John, this, if you want to make another complaint, go ahead and make another complaint, and I will investigate it.
If you made a point of inquiry, and as a parliamentarian, I do want to point out what the policy states. The policy BP 1325 does not have a requirement that the chair's report be in writing. I understand you are asking for a written report. That may be better practice. It's not required by policy. Chair Everman did not put his investigation in writing.
But in response to that, all I'm hearing is secondhand information. There's no primary source here that's reliable. This is all secondary hearsay.
I've talked with the previous chair about this. What other source do you want? He was the one that made the decision, John. He made that when he was chair.
Did you talk to him, the previous chair, related to my complaint?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
Okay. All right, moving right along.
John?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Getting back to the first part of the complaint responses, I disagree wholly with the use of the term allegedly, because those remarks were made on a public forum. They were not allegedly made. Now, she can deny, Sue Couch can deny that she made them because her Facebook got hacked, not previous to that, not after that, because she posted both before those statements were made and then after those statements were made. But the statements that she disavows are the ones that brought negative attention to her. They were not allegedly made. They were made. Now, as to whether or not you have found her to be a racist, I doubt seriously that she would treat you in a manner that you were less than her, as a racist would. Now, I'm not calling her a racist, but the opinions that were espoused in those posts not only attacked black Americans, the LGBTQ, but also Hispanic Americans. So those attacks were not allegedly made. They were made. I read them. Now, the board may not have any recourse because she's gone. The board may not have any recourse because she said what she said prior to her service on the board, but the statements were not allegedly made. They were made, and there was public record of them being made. And for us to say anything other than that lends that we are somehow not disgusted by the nature of those remarks. There is no place for those kinds of remarks, and we have freedom of speech, and I understand that. But there is no place in civilized society for that kind of thing. And for her to say, just like she said, "I didn't know about the real estate purchase. I didn't know about it. I didn't know about it." Anything that brings her negative attention or calls to light things that she has done, she doesn't know about. And those statements were not allegedly made. They were made.
Art, I agree with you that the comments were terrible, and there's no place for them. She had allegedly, is because she hasn't been convicted of anything, somebody made them, but allegedly, she did. I am not, I am not excusing what the language was, anything. There's nothing we can do as far as 1325 is concerned.
I understand that, but like I said, she didn't, she did nothing to disavow something that was, that was put on her Facebook page under her name. She did nothing to disavow that at any point, from the time that they were done until the time that we discussed it as a board. So allegedly, I allege that she made those remarks. No, she has not been convicted of that, but I allege that she did that. But there is no allegation that they were made, because they were made. There is no allegation that she did not disavow them, because she did not disavow them after being given several opportunities to do so. So I want to register my disagreement to the word alleged under, with those remarks in regards to the -- remarks in regards to the, the relationship to her.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I have one other thing that I'm puzzled about, and that's, in my experience, having dealt with similar matters of this, when a charge like this of the conflict of interest is brought, the ability of the person that's subject, being subject to the complaint, they, you, you, my experience has been that they, they're, they don't execute the authority of, they don't execute that area of conflict until the complaint's resolved. Okay, so I'm having a problem here with, there was a complaint that was open-ended, and we still had decisions being made that were related to the hiring of the now President before there was a final action, by the, by an investigation or by anybody, if an investigation even took place.
John, that's been decided by the, the Higher Learning Commission saw that nothing wrong was done.
No, earning, the Higher Learning Commission only reviewed this with respect to their code of ethics, not ours.
Well. John, we can go back and forth all day long. You know, a judge stated that there was no conflict of interest when he dismissed the lawsuit. So, once again, I tell you, if you want to, you want to file another complaint, go right ahead, and I'll investigate it.
That's an interesting thought.
Well, you think about it.
Chairman Swanson?
I would like for us to revisit the conflict of interest policy, 1325. In terms of the conflict of interest, if we see that there is no conflict, that's one thing, but we should be disclosing when we, where we have relationships with individuals or if someone is a close acquaintance, just like we did for the interviews. I think as Board members, as staff, as trustees, we have an obligation to disclose that type of information, and I don't believe that was done. That information should have at least been brought to the Board in terms of the relationships, and that didn't happen. So I, I think we need to take a closer look at 1325 again. Also, as it relates to the Board Chair, the Board Chair being the only person to review such complaints, I do think it should be more than one person making such decisions. And as it relates to the previous Chairperson Everman, for the complaint to come to him, then he'd be the one to investigate it. That seems like a conflict all by itself. So I, we definitely need to look at Board Policy 1325 and the conflict of interest to make some serious changes there, because all of these things that have already been mentioned and the ones that I just mentioned, we need to revisit that to make some changes.
Well, that would be something to bring up to Wendy and Art and for the Policy Committee.
I'd be more than happy to look into it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, in conclusion, where we're really at is, we really don't know, at least from your position, whether there was a conflict of interest complaint or not. All we know is that apparently there was gross mismanagement in the handling of the complaint, and that, that in turn compromises any action that might take place. That's my understanding of what you're...
Well, John, I don't know if there was mismanagement. I know that it was investigated. I've been told it was investigated, and no conflict of interest was found.
Last thing, Chairman Swanson.
Yes?
I do also believe that everything that we do should be in writing. I mean, we, we are dealing with serious issues here. When people come to file a complaint or to whatever is presented, those things need to be in black and white. I was always told, even as a child, if it's not in writing, it didn't happen. So, I mean, just common sense, in my opinion, it seems like everything at a Board level, in terms of trustees, should be in written form.
And one other, last thing.
Yes?
One of the flaws that we have, you know, is that bylaws are usually written for some type of experience. Okay? When whoever wrote these bylaws, that section of the bylaws, never dreamed that, in their wildest dreams, I believe, as much as you believe that Everman did the investigation, I believe that they thought they would ever be dealing with a case that dealt with the Vice Chair at the time, the Chairperson, and the incoming interim President. That's a whole different dimension than what that, our bylaws were written to handle. The bylaws, that bylaw that we have now is designed to handle where it's some type of outside influence that's coming in and exerting, and not this case of where you have the three, three very highly placed officials, officers here at the College, their, whose integrity is being called in question.
Well, that, the, the way to get around this in the future is we look at the bylaw, and we change it accordingly.
And I'm open to all suggestions. I've said that before, and I'll say it again. If there's any Board policy, because I've told all of you to email me, call me, text me something of any policy, and I'll look into it. And with nobody not doing that, I have to come up with them on my own on which ones I decide to do, and we go along with that. So, give me your input, and I'll be happy to look into it.
Okay. Moving along to the MCCEA lawsuit update. I'm going to ask Carrie and John Godola to speak on that.
Shall I, John?
Absolutely.
The Ingham County Circuit Court heard an argument in the Board and the College's motion for summary disposition over a month ago and decided the matter the day of the argument in favor of the College and the Board. Recall that the Board and the College were sued in a mandamus, which is a special kind of lawsuit, and declaratory judgment action by the Union. The court found that both the case against the College and the case against the Board should be and were dismissed, but did different things with respect to the mandamus action and the declaratory judgment action. The mandamus action, the court found, could never have been asserted and could not be asserted in the future and thus dismissed it with prejudice. Because there is a grievance pending with respect to some of the subject matter that was asserted in, with respect to the DEC action, that portion of the complaint against the College and the Board was dismissed without prejudice, which means that when the grievance arbitration is decided under a very, very particular set of rules in which arbitrator's findings can be reviewed by courts, potentially the Ingham or the Genesee County Circuit Court could review the decision of the arbitrator. There was an appeal filed this morning with respect to Judge Garcia's ruling dismissing the case. That was literally something that I found out about at eight o'clock this morning. There is no briefing schedule yet. There's no date for oral argument. All this means essentially is that over the period of the next several months, at least several months, given the schedule of the Michigan Court of Appeals, we will see gradually the parties submit briefs and replies. The court will then schedule argument, and then a month or two after the argument schedule is set, there'll be a hearing, and then the court will deliberate and eventually reach a decision as to whether there are sufficient grounds to change what the Ingham County Circuit Court Judge Garcia did. John?
I would only add that Judge Garcia's order was entered on August 7th, and again, just to note that the Board of Trustees were named individually, or named as a defendant, and the College was named separately as a defendant. Other than that, I 100% agree with the summary that you've provided.
Thank you, John. Yes, John?
The... Since I have both of you here, I really am confused about where in the placement of legal structure the Board fits. I understand, from reading the Michigan Community College Act, I understand the role of, I have a, a brief understanding of the role of the district. I also understand, I understand that it has standing. I understand that the College is a component of the district, and it's still a separate legal corp, or municipal corporation with its own standing. Does the Board, as a separate entity, have standing, or are we just simply a component of the College?
The, the Board is a legal entity under Michigan statutory law, in, in the sense, it's a, it's a corporate entity. Very often, its rights and obligations are the same as the Board, but the Board's rights and duties are prescribed in the Michigan Community College Act in very particular ways, such that the Board has certain obligations that are overarching. For example, the, the right to appoint administrative officers, which can be delegated. So there are some, some specific rules about that, but the Board is an independent entity. It's just that it's very, very closely identified in Michigan corporate law, including nonprofit and public law, with the College itself.
Okay, and my understanding of, as a non-attorney, is that the Michigan Community College Act does invest in the Board the authority of the, of governance?
In the corporate, nonprofit, governmental sense of the word, yes, but there's an allocation of responsibility at every public college in the state. The Board is the policymaking enterprise and appoints the President. Those policies are effectuated by the corporate officers of the organization.
But, the Board has, my, the way I read it, and I could be wrong, but the way I read it is that the Board has responsibility and it has authority. It can delegate authority. It cannot delegate its responsibility that's been post, put on it by the state. Okay, we still have oversight authority as a Board of Trustees. So, that's, and that's where I start getting wrapped around the axle with the separation that seems to be occurring, where we're going to have now, as proposed in this amendment to the bylaws, a separate Board Attorney that only deals with the Board and not with the College. And I don't understand how that fits.
Well, all I can say is that I've often been called in, over the course of my long career in representing colleges, especially public colleges in the state of Michigan, including community colleges, to serve as counsel for the Board. I've also very, very often served as counsel for the underlying college. I've served in many situations because there's not a conflict of interest or even a feeling that there could potentially be a conflict of interest. I've served as counsel to both of them at the same time. I would say that most colleges, public colleges in the state of Michigan have special counsel to the Board and have a general counsel, at least a law firm serving in the role of general counsel, but very often a designated general counsel reporting to the administration. So, those things are all consistent with the Michigan Community College Act, Michigan nonprofit law, Michigan, Michigan corporate governance law, including public law.
So if we have general counsel that is, that is solely under the hiring, is hired solely by the President, and who has firing authority over the President, and that person's going to represent the College, in legal matters, where does our role in governance come in and oversight come in with respect to fulfilling those responsibilities as they're laid out in the Michigan Community College Act?
The Board can delegate the responsibility.
Authority.
Yeah, the responsibility, it says so specifically in the statute, to corporate officers to undertake certain functions, and that would include, if it occurred, the appointment of a general counsel.
And then the, whoever we delegate that to is in turn responsible to the Board. In other words, it's not carte blanche.
If, if, for example, the Board delegated to the President the responsibility to employ a general counsel, then certainly the, both the Board and the President would still retain their original obligations and their, and their rights. So, I, I'm trying to, to lay it out as clearly as I can. Am I helping?
Not really. I mean, I'm just looking at the fact that, you know, I'm a very simple person, and I'm trying to figure out in a table of organization, who's working for who, and who's got authority over who. And when we have a corporate counsel that's hired without any input from the Board, that reports directly to the President, and the President has sole authority over their continued employment, and there's no obligation to report anything to the Board, I'm, I'm greatly confused about how I fulfill our oversight responsibilities.
Well, John, I have a question. You made a motion to give the President the ability to hire and fire as she wished, and that was passed by the Board.
Sure.
So...
It doesn't relieve the Board of Responsibility.
Well, I, John, you want to? I would indicate that the events that preceded me, being in the role as general counsel, preceded the President in her role. When one law firm was representing both the Board and the College, that representation was brought to a close by this Board. That firm was, their contract was terminated. After that step, the Board hired an attorney, to the Board. The general coun, or, excuse me, the President then came in as interim President with no counsel for the College at that time, with the ability to hire, fire, do whatever she chose for employment and administrative purposes, brought in a general counsel. Chronologically, there was a period of time where there was no counsel to the College because the Board took action in bringing in a Board Attorney. And John, or I apologize, Dr. Daly, that's exactly why myself, Attorney DeWitt, why we have looked at, reviewed, put a tremendous amount of effort into 1710, so that your questions are answered, so that the responsibilities of the Board Counsel and the responsibilities of the General Counsel can be addressed by Board Policy, and I believe we'll get to that even this evening to try to clarify what you're asking.
I'm just looking at what, in this appearance, what appears to be, where the Board, there's the potential with the right set of players in place for the Board to be shut out, and that's where I'm concerned. I mean, the, the, getting information on legal matters from the administration is like pulling teeth. This should not be this way.
I can tell you, Dr. Daly, that the Board, any concerns you would have, whether it's about Board, College, you've got a Board Attorney through the Chair. You can address any of those concerns, and I would encourage you to do that. any of those concerns, and I would encourage you to do that. The separation of the responsibilities is something that through Policy 1710, Attorney DeWitt and myself have worked closely to try to come up with delineating what's happening. And even the status of the lawsuits and the Higher Learning Commission and those complaints are indicative of what Attorney DeWitt's indicated, which is when there is potentially a conflict, the board has specific needs in representation and the college has specific needs for representation. In the lawsuit in Ingham County, that's why I pointed out just moments ago, the board was named as a defendant and the college was named separately as a defendant. And in that situation, there's really no choice but for the board to be represented by their counsel and the college to be represented by counsel separately.
Which is what we did. I mean, there are clearly cases, I've had many of them over the years, where the board and the counsel have separate attorneys. They might cooperate, but they have potentially different interests.
Thank you, Carrie. All right, moving on to unfinished business. 1.62, Approval Resolution of Support for Legislative Advocacy. And that, I believe that was, we carried that over from last meeting. Yeah.
Jordan, can you read that?
I think we're going to have to, aren't we? Yeah.
Yep, so as you recall, the item 1.62, Approval Resolution of Support for Legislative Advocacy, was tabled until this meeting by the board based off feedback from trustees. There has been some, language has been amended and added to the resolution to better reflect the board's desires for possible support. So I will reread, as you'll see on page 254. Well, let me, I'll step back. So 253 was the original language that was tabled. So if you flip to 254, you will see that it's essentially the same language, but where it's highlighted red is the additional language after review. So I'll read the full resolution as an entirety. Whereas, Mott Community College has been providing education, training, and workforce and economic development for the Flint, Genesee County, and Mid-Michigan region for more than 100 years. Whereas, thousands of MCC graduates have gone on to obtain gainful employment, pursue worthwhile, productive careers, and raise families on good wages and benefits. Whereas, local, state, and federal resources have played an important role in supporting and funding our students' ability to access MCC programs, graduate with credentials, and subsequently thrive in their workplace and communities. Whereas, a longtime bipartisan commitment to supporting low to moderate income and first-generation post-secondary students, especially at our nation's community colleges, has added significantly to the American way and quality of life. Whereas, students at MCC have utilized programs like the Michigan Achievement Scholarship and Community College Guarantee and Reconnect Programs, the Federal Pell Grant Program, the Supplemental Educational Opportunity Grant Program, Federal Work Study and Career Technical Education Opportunity as Spring Boards to important training and education in living-wage-paying jobs. And this is where the highlighted red additional language. Whereas, both the United States Congress and the Michigan Legislature are presently considering various proposals that could seriously harm these and other critical programs and undermine important opportunities for the many community college students who rely on them. Therefore, be it resolved that the Charles Stewart Mott Community College Board of Trustees advocates for all legislative efforts required for MCC to maintain the ability through local, state, and federal funding resources and programs to offer accessible, affordable, and high-quality educational opportunities to our students, thus enabling them to achieve personal, educational, and professional success and attain the American dream for themselves, their families, and the communities where they live and work. The additional language in the highlighted red, this includes advocating against any legislative or executive proposal that would harm our students, their opportunities to succeed, and the college's ability to support them on their journey.
Okay, so this was the second reading, correct?
Correct.
So I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to approve with a second. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I want to thank the administration for taking seriously the comments that I made at the last meeting regarding this. It was important to me that the advocacy and the activism that, and a lot of people don't like the word activism, but when we're advocating, we are actually actively participating, so that makes us activists, that we are activists in favor of those, those things that would benefit our students and our community, and we would advocate against those things. I do know that, I see that we have "could" in the first, in the final whereas, and we have "would harm our students" in the second. I don't know that we want those to be different. I don't have an issue with "could" or "would," and I did appreciate the conversation in the, I watched the video of the informational meetings, and I am more of the opinion that "would" is more effective because we're talking about the way things would affect our students. But I don't have an issue with "could." We can go with that. I'm just wondering whether we, whether it's consistent by having "could" in one and "would" in the other. So, you know, if it's not, then let's make them both the same and go from there.
Would you like to amend that?
Like is a strong word.
Would you amend that?
I will amend. I propose an amendment to the motion that on the, after, the "therefore be it resolved" in red, that we change the word "would harm our students" to "could harm our students." So that way, they're both consistent.
Okay, do we have a second?
Just, yeah, get the second first.
Second. Second.
Okay, motion to amend.
So Trusty Reyes, I want to make sure you indicated that there's, the words are different in two different places. I have the "would" in the "therefore" clause. Is there a "could" above that?
Yes.
Where would I find that? Found it. Thank you very much.
But he's not proposing that that would change.
You're proposing that they be the same.
Yes.
Correct, and which, did you want "would" or "could"?
I want the, the one after the "therefore be it resolved" changed from "would" to "could," so that it's consistent with what is in the final whereas.
Thank you.
So...
Want me to restate what I have?
Yes.
And Trusty Reyes can confirm it. So Trusty Reyes is moving to substitute, in the proposed resolution, to substitute in the "therefore," the paragraph below the "therefore be it resolved," the last sentence, to read, "This includes advocating against all legislative or executive proposals that could harm our students." Is that correct?
That is accurate.
That's the motion. And that would be to amend. So if that passes, then we would go back to the amended motion.
Any more discussion on the motion to amend? See and none? Let's do a roll call vote, please.
On the amendment to the resolution, Trusty Reyes?
Aye.
Trusty Dodson?
Yes.
Trusty Daly?
Yes.
Trusty Walcott?
Yes.
Trusty Miller?
Yes.
Chair Swanson?
Yes.
The amendment to the resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, now we're back to the 1.62. There was, I would need a new, do I, don't need a new motion?
There's a motion on the floor.
Okay, all right, and it's been seconded. Any discussion?
We're voting on the proposed 1.62 as amended.
Correct. Okay, time to vote. Would you do a roll call?
Roll call vote on the amended resolution. Trusty Daly?
Yes.
Trusty Dodson?
Yes.
Trusty Miller?
Yes.
Trusty Reyes?
Yes.
Trusty Walcott?
Yes.
Chair Swanson?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
1.63, Addition of Board Policy 4631, Expressive Activity. This is the second reading, and we will vote. Which one are you going to read that? Jordan, you ready?
On the item 1.63, Addition of Board Policy 4631, Expressive Activity, second reading, Freedom of Thought and Expression is essential to any institution of higher education in developing and administering this policy. Charles Stewart Mott Community College, MCC or the college, recognizes the freedoms guaranteed by the United States Constitution and Michigan Constitution. MCC also recognizes the need to preserve and protect its students, faculty, employees, guests, visitors, and property, and to ensure the effective operation of educational business and related activities of the college. MCC property is not off-limits for expressive activity by students, faculty, employees, guests, visitors, or members of the public. Nevertheless, expressive activities at MCC may be constitutionally regulated where they infringe on the rights of others, such as materially disrupting classwork or creating a substantial disorder. On the basis of the preceding information, the following addition of Board Policy 4631, Expressive Activity, is recommended by the board, or by the members of the Board Policy Committee, as shown on pages 257 to 265. Be it resolved that the Charles Stewart Mott Community College Board of Trustees adopts the addition of Board Policy 4631, Expressive Activity.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve 1.63, Addition to Board Policy 1431, Expressive Activity.
Support.
I have a motion to accept, to accept 4631, Expressive Activity. It's seconded. Any discussion? Art?
Yeah, I just want to, to the full board, as I did in the committee, hearing that I think the policy's just too long. We have a nine, or eight or nine-page policy here, and I will again express my gratitude to the work that you did on this, John, Attorney Godola. But I see section two, the policy statement, being sufficient as a policy. Everything beyond that, to me, is the responsibilities of the how to enforce the policy by the administration. And I don't see where, if every one of our policies outlined how the administration was to enforce the policy, our policy book would be huge. So I saw, I saw the "what" as the policy statement, the "why" and "how" as everything beyond that. Because I saw that as a thing, I just, I just share some, I have some reservations as to accepting the whole thing, because when we get into the procedures and the scope, invariably, things will be missed. And it's in those things where liability occurs, in my opinion. So, you know, for that reason, I did, as you and Vice Chair Walcott know, in the committee meeting, I voted against the adoption of this policy. And so I speak against the motion at this point for that reason.
Yes, John.
Chair Swanson, I have...
Oh, I'm sorry, can you?
I just wanted, I just wanted a little bit more context around this particular policy, because I'm wondering, has any expressive activities taken place before, which warrants us to make changes or to revisit this particular policy? I mean, I'm thinking about some of the things that I've seen on campus, and I don't know, they might be considered expressive activity. So I'm just trying to see where, what direction we're going in as it relates to expressive activities and infringing on the rights of others constitutionally regulated, because I just don't want some of the things that certain groups throughout campus have had in the past and that have been very helpful, like, may they be considered expressively an expressive activity and not allowed on campus?
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
John and I have talked about policy. I'm fairly familiar with the area of the law. You're hitting on the correct issue. The law, the First Amendment law in the federal courts, but also in the Michigan Supreme Court, in the area, has two poles. It is the right to expression, which a citizen, a staff member, a faculty member, a student, and the public have. And then there's the protection of the learning environment, the safety of the public, the safety of staff, the safety of faculty. And those two things are both enshrined in this policy. If, when you look at the policy, and this is the reason, Member Reyes, that the policy is longer and has very specific items in it. It is both a robust protection of the First Amendment expression rights of the various constituents we're talking about, including the public, who come on campuses all over the country all the time, and specific rules, for example, time and place restrictions, use of equipment restrictions, the need in some cases for the administration to ask that a group in unusual circumstances seek insurance in connection with their activities. All of those things have been repeatedly, that is, hundreds of times in this country, been addressed, especially by the federal courts. And so virtually every provision that is set forth in this policy reflects the need to protect the First Amendment expression rights and to protect the college as it protects the faculty, the public, the staff, and everyone associated with the college. John?
So I would agree. Trusty Dodson, I would indicate that there was no policy. The policy needs to exist, quite frankly, in today's world for exactly the protections both of the First Amendment, citizens' rights to speak, to protest, activism, all of those things that each of you have mentioned. There would not be another policy that I could envision where both the policy and the procedure would become necessary. And in the committee, I addressed to Trusty Reyes, the procedure is necessary for the protection of the college. And I worry about a policy without the procedure, because that's where you leave the college open to, you know, potential criticism, lawsuits, for not allowing the First Amendment rights. But there can be First Amendment rights, but those are not, they can be controlled. And my goal was to make sure that the college environment could continue to function, people could drive to and from where they needed to be, could walk to and from where they needed to be, could be in class without disruption, so the business of the college could carry on.
on with the individual's right to protest on the college campus as well. And striking that balance is why, as Attorney DeWitt said, there, there, there is no other policy that requires both the protection of individuals' rights and then the, the procedure to protect the college, to make sure that the First Amendment is recognized, acknowledged, and I think this policy does that. I apologize, and it was nine pages, but the detail and effort that went into this, I can tell you, the, the, this college should not be without a policy. And the protection of the First Amendment is critically important, not only to me, but in my role to the college. I think colleges are the place where people should be exercising their First Amendment rights. And then the procedures, as Attorney Reyes has brought up, I feel also need to be delineated to protect the college, so that the college is, number one, protected, but number two, not infringing upon the rights of the individuals to express themselves pursuant to the, the Constitution. So this policy is unique in that sense. As Attorney DeWitt mentioned, there's both the policy and procedure. I also don't want the policy book to be thousands of pages, but I do feel that it's necessary, both to protect the First Amendment, is why there's a policy, and the procedure is laid out specifically to protect.
A lot of the cases in the area involve a federal judge asking a college, according to what criteria is it decided to limit, which is offensive to the First Amendment, the expression rights of a person wishing to speak on the college campus. And if the answer is, I know it when I see it, it's just wrong, I tell you, it's just wrong, that's when you're going to get your policy overturned in federal court. If you've delineated the circumstances, for example, this isn't going to take place in a classroom, this isn't going to take place after 10 o'clock at night, you are on far, far safer ground in both protecting the First Amendment expression and limiting it where it's appropriate for reasons of health and safety in the educational environment.
In the last law school admission that I would give that Attorney DeWitt and I have been through, is the First Amendment right protects freedom of speech, but that freedom of speech is limited, and the example that was always used in law school is you can't scream fire in a crowded movie theater, you can't cause chaos, risk, and so forth by your free speech. And that's the most basic example that's always used, and why I believe this policy itself needs both the policy and the procedure for the protection of the college and for the protection of everyone's rights under the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution.
Okay, John?
First of all, I commend both of you for taking this on, because I, believe me, I understand the difficulty, it's like trying to nail Jello to the wall.
It's a balancing act, for sure.
A couple of things, on my 25th, page 259, under, where you've got the section six starting. Okay, I would suggest you take that little, last paragraph that's in there under, in that area, that's before you get to see the no policy, and move that up underneath the first paragraph under scope. Just so it's, it's there. And I would, I'd really like to see more in our policies and bylaws, more language like this, that where the bylaws don't become a substitute for judgment of on-scene personnel. In other words, that no, it can't address every possible activity, and it does not relieve the responsibility of whoever's in charge at that point from acting. The second question I've got deals, goes to like page 258. And talk to me a little bit, you've got a list under definitions of expressive activity, and then expressive activity, and it lists all that stuff out. And my concern is, just, it goes to basically what Attorney DeWitt was referring to with regards to not having something, having something that's undefined. Okay, who, what's a sign, and what's a placard? And I know that sounds like it's, it's petty, but it's not when you get down to the application of it. And if it's going to be left like this, then who makes that decision? Because that's a lot of responsibility to put on the head of, of one person that may be dealing with, I don't know, for instance, uh, assembly, what's an assembly? Is three people an assembly? I think five is, maybe, certainly 15. But you, you see where I'm, where I'm going with this, that, you know, beauty is in the eye of the beholder with these definitions under expressive activity.
John, I wonder whether you agree, at, at some point, you're right, you're almost, you would almost have to recite the prevailing case law, the First Amendment case law, in order to, to determine whether three people would be an assembly, it probably would be, by the way, under the First Amendment. But there, it, it would be very difficult, there, I mean, there are thousands of decisions addressing these things out there.
I understand, and I'm not looking at it from a courtroom decision, I'm looking at it from the point of view of an officer that's on the spot, that has to make these decisions now. And this is, he, he, she does not have a lot of guidance from this, and what might be assigned to one person is not assigned to another person. In fact, if you look at the, almost an equivalent situation, you look at the signage for liquor sales that has to be posted at groceries, that's very specific as to the size of those signage. Now, I'm not sure what the answer is, okay? That needs to be worked out with the people that are going to be doing the enforcement and the legal side of the house. But it needs to be something that's a little less, a little more constrained than just a sign. I mean, I can, that's a sign.
If I could just add, Dr. DeWitt, the, to create an exhaustive list, that obviously would be impossible.
Right.
I did involve Chief Sekman in what gets to, again, back to the kind of the first question, the policy versus procedure, there clearly needs to be police involvement to keep the campus safe. And that's where I felt the policy had a list, gave specific direction, but the police, the Department of Public Safety does need to make decisions on the spot, and there's no way to create an exhaustive list.
If it's included in their SOP, and it gets brought out through a training process, that's fine, but somewhere, there's got to be something that's a standard. Because we can't get into a situation where you say have three demonstrations going on at the same time, at the same campus, and we're using different rules for the three.
Yeah, and...
And that's the purpose of this policy, is to establish that standard. The decisions will be made in combination of myself, Chief of Police, others from the Department of Public Safety, and legal advice, just like every, any of the other policies and actions that we enforce on a daily basis. And we, and it is a joint...
How will those decisions be made, then?
A joint decision amongst...
Are you going to be, you're going to be officer on the spot making the decision?
We will, we, in advance, if it's a protest that is brought to us in advance, and at the time as needed.
There's certain things that certainly an officer in, on the spot could decide. If it's 10:00 PM, or if an event has reached a stage where it's dangerous to members of the public, or the faculty, the staff, then the officer would and could and would make a decision.
And this policy is also going to be implemented as part of the, the emergency management guide as well, that we have for campus, so, and there are numerous...
I'm still supportive of the policy, okay? I just want to be sure that we don't put our officers into a position of making decisions that they're going to be held accountable for without direct guidance. That's what I'm looking at.
They have direct guidance, thank you.
Any other discussion? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Chair Swanson, I, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. On page 257, under section three, number two, it says that the campus expressive-related activities shall not infringe upon the rights or privileges of anyone or disrupt classes. And then 258, under section five, it describes what expressive activity is, and it just says that it's defined as carrying or displaying signs, some other things, and then it talks about marches, rallies, demonstrations, protests, and so on and so forth. So I'm thinking about some of the demonstrations that went on, you know, recently, over the course of this year. And it further expels on that on page 260, where it says, "Members of the public, guests, or visitors who are not registered students, faculty, employees, or recognized student organizations must receive permission from the college." It's hard to receive permission when you're, when you're protesting, or when you're exercising your First Amendment right. So I'm just trying to understand how these things will fit in, so that we're not, we're not deterring people from utilizing and exercising their voice.
If I might, Chair, Trustee Dodson, the concern is always spontaneous versus planned, and the designation distinction from what you're addressing, planned protests are one thing, spontaneous protests are another. My goal in writing this policy was to limit neither of those, but simply to categorize, there is a difference between something that's planned and brought to campus versus something that's spontaneous and happening on campus. That's the distinction that I would bring to your attention to try to help clarify.
And do we highlight that in, I didn't see planned versus spontaneous?
There are elements of the policy throughout the pages where there's discussion about, you know, insurance and those types of things, if it's going to be a large demonstration, but that is, that's the rationale, I would say, behind what the distinction that you're drawing.
Thank you.
One last question. In your putting this together, has there been any type of input slash review by our insurance carrier?
The insurance company was not consulted. I can tell you, Trustee Daly, that what I looked at, quite frankly, was consistency with the First Amendment, and I did review and look at, as Attorney DeWitt and I have spoken about, what other colleges were doing. There was not a review by the insurance company. There is, though, in those planned protests, there is a need for insurance to be brought to the college, just in case there is some destruction of property.
I understand that, I'm just talking about the, our own carrier in, that would be defending our, an accusation of liability against us.
They, they would be, under that provision of the policy, they would be notified, but there was, I didn't consult with their legal department in creating the policy.
Nor, to my knowledge, did the insurance company in, associated with the binder for the, the general and other liability for the college suggest or require any such insurance. I would only comment that reasonable rules that give public safety the responsibility to both protect the rights of someone who wishes to assemble or protest, and protect students, faculty, and staff, and the public itself, would, in my experience, be welcomed by a carrier.
All I'm asking about is what are the constraints related to this? Based upon my experience has been that anytime you, you go to court and there's a signage issue involved, one of the first questions the court starts looking at is, okay, what was your, what guidance did you provide to these people about what was allowable and what was not allowable?
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on the motion to approve the addition to BP, excuse me, is a new policy, motion to approve BP 4631, expressive activity.
Is, is that with, inclusive of the amendment that I wanted to make with the movement?
I did not hear a motion on that, did you want to do that?
Yes.
Just a moment. Go ahead and state the motion.
Yeah, make a motion for the amendment that you're looking for, John, please.
What are you guys get paid for? I've got it, if you want. I get to do all the work, I get to do all the work. I've got it, if you want, John.
Yeah, please.
Okay, page 259, are you with me over there, John? Okay, there is language just before distribution of materials. It reads in one sentence, "No policy can address every possible activity or situation that may occur on college property, and MCC reserves the right to address such situations as they arise." Because Member Daly believes that that concept is more general and fits better in the scope section, he has proposed that that be between the last three words of the scope section on the same page in A, and the beginning of section B, speech. John, I'm just, I don't think that that makes a substantive difference in what you were trying to accomplish, and I, I see no problem with that, do you?
That's fine with me.
Just a second.
So, motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Okay, let's vote.
So on the motion to amend the approval of the resolution, excuse me, the new policy, BP 4631, expressive activity, to move the sentence at the end of 6B, begins no policy and ends they arise, to move it to be immediately under 6A scope. Is that correct?
Yes.
On that motion, Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Walcott?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Dodson?
Yes.
Chair Swanson?
Yes.
The amendment is passed.
Okay, now we get back to...
Military.
1.63, we need to vote, all discussions happened, amendments have happened. All right, let's vote on ratifying that.
On the motion of item 1.63 approval for the new board policy 4631, expressive activity...
As amended.
As amended. Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Dodson?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
No.
Trustee Walcott?
Yes.
Chair Swanson?
Yes.
The vote is six to one, it passes.
The vote is five to one.
I'm sorry, I'm challenged in math because I'm an attorney.
Okay, moving on to 1.64, board policy 7310, military orders.
Move we adopt?
Second.
We've got a move to adopt and a second, any discussion? John was here. Okay, seeing no discussion, do a roll call vote on that?
Roll call vote on item 1.64, the amendment to BP 7310, military orders. Trustee Walcott?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Dodson?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Chair Swanson?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Okay, moving on to 1.65. The amendment to Board Policy 1640 Public Participation. I would entertain a motion to make that policy.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion. It's been seconded. Is there any discussion? Art?
Again, I sit on this committee, and I'm expressing to the full board that which I expressed to the committee. I disagree with the speaker being limited to three minutes.
Okay. John?
I support Trustee Reyes's position.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none. We'll do a roll call vote.
Roll call vote on Item 1.65, the amendment to BP 1640 Public Participation. Trustee Walcott?
Yes.
Trustee Dotson?
No.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
No.
Trustee Reyes?
No.
Chair Swanson?
Yes.
The vote is three to three. Four votes are required. The motion fails.
New business. Treasurer's report. Larry, would you please?
Good evening, Madam President, Chair, and Trustees. I'll be very brief in my comments on the July Treasurer's report. We did go over this in the topical sessions. I think it was a week ago, if I'm right. Let's track the time. So first month in, we are in a new fiscal year. Total expenditures is about 13.3 million, 6 million out of the general fund and 7.2 out of all the other funds. Totals revenues and transfers, 21.2 million, about 22.1% of the budget. When we compare this to the past two years, actuals, we are significantly higher in tuition for both in credit and non-credit and comparative in the other revenue categories. Expenditures, you'll see it's $6.1 million. This is higher than compared to the past two years, and the differences are in utilities and insurance and also operations to communications, which is mainly due to the illusion license. Excuse me, also see transfers from future funding. Again, the past four years, colleges transferred in savings from the unrestricted portion of the HERF grants to help fill the initial budget gap. And then on the budget side, you can see that our budget, a good gauge of the sufficiency of our budgets compared to the percentage of the total budget utilized in both revenues and expenditures. The revenues, the percentage achieved compared to prior year's budget percentages indicates the college is ahead of its budget. And then this would be the opposite for expenditures. In July revenues, we are ahead in tuition, both credit and non-credit, and with the balance, trust is behind from the prior years. As for expenditures, we're tracking comparatively to prior years with the exception of utilities and insurance and operations and communications, which I mentioned before. On the balance sheet side, total assets, 41.2 million, up about 5 million from last July. Largest difference is $1 million decrease in cash and cash equivalents, $4.8 million increase in short-term investments, and a $3.8 million increase in accounts receivable net, which is net of the allowance for bad debts. And this is due to the increase in summer and fall enrollment. We have a significant change in liabilities for July, increase of 1.5 million accounts payable, and this is due to the timing of the voucher and vendor payments. All of the balance sheet accounts are consistent with the prior year and the three-year average, as you'll see. And then, just as a reminder, we do have a due-to-do from other funds. What that means is that we want checking account, and therefore, all the activities are recorded, all the cash activities recorded in that account with all the economic activity recorded in the funds as they occur. Oftentimes, there will be amounts due to or due from these funds, and that's, those are self-balancing. In the other funds, 7.2 million was expended, 110,000 out of the main street placement and bond funds for college capital-related improvements. And then the remaining 7.1 million was out of the agency auxiliary designated scholarship and grant funds for grant activities and student scholarships. That is the July Treasurer's report.
Second.
Motion to accept been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Can you head around to the bathroom?
Okay, we're past. Okay. 1.70, Approval of Resolution for the Creation of the 2627 Strategic Plan. Jordan, would you please read that resolution?
So, Item 1.70, Approval of Resolution for the Creation of the 2026-2027 Calendar Year Strategic Plan. The Mott Community College Board of Trustees recognizes the importance of a comprehensive, inclusive, and forward-looking strategic plan to guide Mott Community College's mission, strategic priorities, and the allocation of resources to achieve them. With the conclusion of Mott Community College's previous strategic plan at the end of 2024, the Board reaffirms its commitment to the development of a fast-looking strategic, or a forward-looking strategic plan that reflects the evolving needs of its students, faculty, staff, community, and workforce partners. The Board affirms its role in setting strategic direction, representing the public's interest, engaging at key planning milestones, and approving the final plan while delegating to the President the planning milestones and approving the final plan while delegating to the President the responsibilities of working with the necessary stakeholders to establish the strategic plan, including measurable goals and outcomes. This strategic plan will also incorporate institutional priorities that enhance the overall student learning experience. The Board of Trustees fully supports the holistic approach outlined in the attached proposed tentative timeline, which will serve as a guide for Mott Community College in establishing a strategic plan for calendar years 2026 and 2027. On the basis of the preceding information, the following resolution is recommended. Be it resolved, the Charles Stewart Mott Community College Board of Trustees approves the creation of the 2026-2027 calendar year strategic plan and authorizes the President to lead the development of this strategic plan in accordance with board policy and accreditation standards.
Thank you, Jordan. I would entertain a motion to, oh, that's not for yes, for action.
It is.
Yeah, sorry. I would entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any discussion? Yes, John?
A couple of questions. First, we have, I'm looking at this is just unusual for me because usually you see a plan chart, and that's actually what we're approving here, essentially. You have several listening sessions that are on here. Could you talk to me a little bit about who's going to be listened to? And where do you plan on those taking being held?
This is the tentative timeline that was discussed during the Committee of the Whole meeting as a reflection or reflective of a typical planning process. And the listening sessions that we discussed either via live forum or via surveys, and we discussed the fact that surveys oftentimes are an alternative because of an abbreviated timeline, because we want to have a strategic plan in place near the beginning of the year next year since it will be a full calendar year without a plan in place. So use of surveys to solicit feedback from students, both current students and alumni, as well as current staff and faculty and retirees, and also community members, the Board of Trustees, of course. So there's a long, we had a long discussion related to the variety of audiences. The full intent is to solicit feedback from as many groups as possible, including our employers for whom we are serving through the education programs that we deliver, as well as other community members and leaders, groups, organizations. And so we will be looking to solicit input on the planning process and objectives, key objectives for the college from all of those constituents.
So surveys generally go to a selected population that, and you get, hopefully you get a decent response from them. And listening sessions, that would be the opportunity then for face-to-face communication from key stakeholders in the community?
It's one of the potential avenues. Those are the details that we are still going to evaluate.
We is who?
The executive cabinet and myself is and the strategic planning consultant that we will be working with, and we will evaluate all of our options to solicit feedback in the most expeditious and in a way that will obtain the maximum amount of feedback. And in fact, we have had discussions related to the creation of the survey. There's a draft survey that's already underway that I will be reviewing shortly. And the intent isn't to down-select to a certain group. It would, the intent would be to send the survey to every student. And we have a
Well, it needs to go to more than just the students.
And the entire group that I just listed, all of those individuals, not a portion of those groups of individuals. Every alumni that we have in our
So it goes to the general population?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. It will be a larger subset or a larger selection, a larger, the largest possible amount of feedback and much more effective than any public, personal forum because the data that we receive back will be easily consolidated and evaluated and analyzed versus in an open forum. It's not as an effective, there's not an effective way. It's a good discussion and find a, but we'll have more usable data, tangible feedback from a larger group of
Who's writing the survey?
Feedbacks. We're, it's a joint effort.
With who?
Myself.
And? That's, joint implies more than one. Who?
Yes, the executive cabinet.
And what kind of experience do they have writing surveys for this type of, for a strategic?
And our strategic planning consultants.
Okay, okay, good. Okay, I just want to be sure that if we're spending money on a consultant, that we ask the right questions because I've seen surveys that go out before, and they list, what would you like? One, two, three, four, five, and they don't talk about trade-offs. In other words, the consequences, if we do this, we can't do that. Okay? And surveys, like any tool, are not a panacea. They have shortcomings as well. And I'm just looking to try to get, not do one or the other, but rather a blend that gets us good positive information from as broad a segment as we can in the district.
That has been under discussion as well.
Okay, and so then I can assume if we approve this tonight, this moves from being tentative to being the plan?
No. This, what, the timeline?
Yeah.
No, it's tentative.
So if you have to change the timeline, are you going to come back to us?
We can do that.
Okay. Given that, because to me, that's, I just want to know what's going on. If this is the plan and there's a change in plan, then I want to know about it. So, thank you very much. Art?
Yeah, I have a question. And during the Committee of the Whole, for information purposes, for all the trustees, we went through and made an exhaustive list of stakeholders. The, what I see here, the sentence beginning, "The Board affirms its role in setting strategic direction while delegating to the President the responsibility of working with the necessary stakeholders." The list that we came up with, are those the necessary stakeholders? Or is it going to be pared from that list? And how will it be pared from that list? I'm stuck on the word necessary in this because being the community college for this area, the list of stakeholders that we came up with during the Committee of the Whole seems to be the necessary stakeholders. So I'm just wondering, that turn of phrase, I question.
Well, we, it will be reflective of those groups. I don't have that exact list here in front of me, but I was present. I was very supportive, as you know, and as you saw in the meeting. So yes, those are the stakeholder groups. And I just attempted to list all of those in speaking with Trustee Daly just a moment ago, yes. Those, it will be reflective of students, current and former.
Right. We wrote all of those down.
Employees, current and former, yes. Yes, it does. Yes. And there will be a survey. The attempt is to send a survey to every individual that would fall within that list. I mean, then there were some ambiguous, or not ambiguous, but there were some current employers that we currently work with, potential future employers. So there's some question, would we then send, would that require that we send the survey to every single business in Genesee County and all of the surrounding districts? And so we will use very good judgment. We want a robust and the widest cast net of feedback to work with. So, and that is actually part of why the survey will give us more data than we could ever hope to achieve by having individual forums where people are and the type of data that we collect will be very robust. But we will ensure that the survey is written in such a way that not only are there questions to answer, but also free feedback forms and comments that can be added as well. And I think we'll get a lot more feedback using that approach than the individual forums.
Yeah, and I didn't bring up the forums for that reason because I was present at the meeting. And if you recall, I implored my fellow trustees that we utilize our own spheres of influence to discuss when these surveys are going out and the importance of returning those surveys so that the community college has as much information as we need.
Right.
More information than we hope for because we were shooting for, they said that 20% return would be considered successful because people tend to not do it. So in response to that, and John, more for your informational purposes, I had brought up that, you know, if I know that they're going out, I can make sure, just from myself, that local union papers, that I write an article or put an ad in local union papers. Look for the Mott Community College survey. Your input is important. And because, you know, so many of the people that I used to represent and I work with are students, have family members who are students at Mott or alumni themselves. So us utilizing our positions as So, us utilizing our positions as a Board of Trustees to talk to our spheres of influence to try to make sure that we're getting maximum input from the community. I just wanted to make sure that the list wasn't being paired. When I saw necessary stakeholders, I'm like, "Well, wait a minute. We went through the list of stakeholders. I just want to make sure that somebody's not getting cut from the list."
No, that is still a list. And in addition to actually targeting those lists and sending requests for completion of surveys directly to those to whom we have the contact information for, we also hope to have a link that can be sent to anyone who has interest in providing feedback. Of course, someone from within our district, right? That's who we're seeking feedback from, either those who have attended in the past or currently live within the district that we serve.
Right.
So, yes, it is the same list.
There was discussion? Okay. There was discussion about the development of a QR code or made -- QR code being made available so that we could actually carry it around and do that as well?
That's right. Yeah.
Any other discussion?
I'm confused now. Where we -- where you have the listening sessions, is that really now surveys?
We may have some listening sessions. The primary form of feedback will be through surveys.
Okay. Where are -- where is that indicated on the chart?
That is part of listening sessions. It's soliciting the feedback from the community and current students and employees. So, that hasn't been -- this was the exact chart that we reviewed during the Committee of the Whole. This is a tentative guideline for the Board to see how we might accomplish achieving a strategic plan by January 1st. And in particular, what you would want to focus on are the times at which the Board would be receiving additional feedback, or receiving updates, I should say. So, the Board update number three, Board update number one, two, let's see, and four. So, there are four Board updates, and those would happen roughly along this timeline at the point indicated.
And this is just a tentative?
That's right.
Yeah. Okay. So, is this going to be changed to a final on an iterative basis, on a bit-by-bit basis? Are we going to get another form that's instead of tentative says final?
Well, John, I --
I'm not asking stupid questions.
No, I never said you were. I'm just explaining this. This is tentative, and there's going to be hiccups here or there. We don't know what the -- there may not be any.
What the next step is.
We will provide an update on the progress that we've made when we -- each month, every Board meeting, and the status of the planning process and where we are within this timeline. And we can provide an updated timeline, an updated tentative timeline each time that we meet.
Okay, so for maybe the next time, then, you can show something on there about what your plan is for the survey development and surveys going out and surveys being returned?
By the time we meet next, that process will likely be nearly complete.
That'd be great. Okay.
Sent and received. Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. Would you read the motion?
Chairman Swanson? I'm sorry. I just -- a point of clarification.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, President Shanda. Did you say that the process will be completed within, I think that's like a month, right? To send out the surveys and to get them back? Is it just like a four-week turnaround that we're looking at?
The completion of the surveys, they'll go out, and we'll have about a two-week, two-to-three-week turnaround time. So, it's likely that we will still be accumulating or receiving feedback by the next Board meeting, but the survey will be complete and most likely distributed.
Okay. And the Board will receive a link so that we can also share?
Yes. Mm-hmm. That's right. Okay.
Pending motion is to approve item 1.70, approval of resolution for the creation of the 2026-2027 calendar year strategic plan.
Is that in form of motion?
Okay, I guess. So, clarify for me, this is actually a standalone document. This is not part of the resolution.
It is part of the -- it's referenced in the resolution as an attachment, as an indicative, tentative timeline for illustration purposes.
Help me here. Talk to me like I'm six. Come on. Where is it in the resolution?
Do you want to help?
Do you want me to?
Okay, thank you.
What's there? Okay. Yeah.
On that approval of item 1.70. Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Reyes?
Yes.
Trustee Dotson?
Yes.
Trustee Walcott?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Chair Swanson?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Moving to 1.71, amendment to Board Policy 1710. This is the first reading. It is not for action. Jordan, got that handy?
So, just as the Chair stated, this is the first reading, not for action. As you notice, on page 279, the red line, strike-through language, is the proposed recommendations by the Board Policy Committee that came at the previous Board Policy Committee. So, if you have any questions, obviously, feel free to ask. But the, like I said, the strike-through and then the red line is for the proposed amended language.
Did you say we could ask questions?
Yeah, absolutely.
On this? Okay. Okay. Sorry. On 1710, it says "general," and then "as using this policy," there's several points in red. And then the sentence that starts, "The duties of the Board Attorney or legal firm shall be prescribed by this policy, college, and professional regulations." We hire a legal firm. That firm assigns us an attorney. I mean, you know, we were made to know that you are our Board Attorney by your firm, but the firm is actually our attorney. So, I don't understand why "or legal firm" is crossed out. Because should you decide to move on from that firm, we still retain that firm as our Board Attorney, and they would assign us a new attorney. Probably not nearly as good as you are. But they would assign us that. So, I didn't understand why "or legal firm" was crossed out.
And remember, Reyes, there's a red section shortly above that. Board Attorney means the law firm or individual appointed by the Board
Yes.
to serve as Board Attorney. In other words, they're interchangeable for this purpose. It is possible for me to leave the firm, although I've been there 41 years.
Okay. So, it's just about time. Okay. Yes, I saw that. I wanted to make sure it didn't contradict it. Okay, thank you.
A couple of things. First of all, we say in here that the general objective of the policy is to clarify the separation of duties between the Board Attorney and the MCC General Counsel. The current bylaws refer to a college counsel. Okay? I have no knowledge of what a general counsel does. Okay? So, if this is going to clarify the separation, we need to have a little understanding of what we're separating. And I'd like, you know, something included about, okay, the MCC General Counsel. And specifically, my concerns are, who does this person work for? And what is their status? I mean, I'm concerned right now. I have a real concern over the fact that we have legal representation to the college that is here with hiring and firing authorities solely vested in the President.
John, you had that situation under your last president. And in fact, she hired and fired three, four, five law firms at a time. So, and at that time, you also had your own Board Counsel. And so, what John handles are day-to-day administrative, internal, and replaces roughly two to two and a half external law firms with his work
I was here, we need to introduce him.
Internally. Right. So, to answer your question as to what he does, he handles the work of roughly two to two and a half former external law firms that were utilized by the former president. And so, now we have consolidated that down to just a very fraction of the former external law support that the college needed. So, John's handling all of the day-to-day internal legal requirements for labor, HR issues, as well as FOIA requests and any other type of internal college-related legal matters that don't need the support of an external law firm. And we have an extraordinary instance, such as a lawsuit, an HLC complaint. We drum up plenty of external law firm expenses to fight those. So, we'll share more of that later. But in the interim, John's handling the college day-to-day administrative, operational-related legal issues, and there's no overlap between what John does and what the Board Attorney does.
Well, okay, then that's fine.
All the same as it was when the same Board and you voted to bring Brickley on to represent the Board. Bill Brickley?
Right.
Yes.
And I'm not saying I agreed with that. Okay? The -- all I'm saying is, to me, I want it to be clear to me, who is the college counsel? If we're involved in a lawsuit, who represents the college? And I just think in this bylaw that we're producing, this is the Board's information to go to, to understand that, that that be put in there. If it's going to be, if your intent is that we're going to use him just for internal matters and everything else sounds like it's going to get outsourced to special counsel, then some statement letting the Board know what's going on. What is the strategy that the President has for dealing with the other side of the equation?
Okay. And then the second thing is, I would suggest we add as item 27, the board, the following, "The Board will approve, will review and approve all bills from Board Counsel prior to payment." On page 280.
Number one, set -- no. Number seven, I guess.
Are you going with number seven?
Yeah, it would be number seven. It would be a new number seven. "The Board will review and approve all bills from Board Counsel prior to payment."
How would that work?
We come to a --
How about in the summer when we don't have a June meeting as normal? So, we string them out 30 days, 60 days, excuse me?
We work --
And I know how everybody likes special meetings. Figure out a way to do it. I'm not going -- I want to see the bills come to this Board and have this Board approve them before, so we know where the expenditures are occurring. I believe that's part of our job. And if -- and I tried to word something that would keep it simple and allow that to happen. I think we -- this Board needs to know what it's paying for attorney fees. Well, if you would like a report on, I don't think this is the way to do it. Both John and Carrie?
I don't care about him.
Okay.
He's independent counsel, so, or general counsel working underneath the direct supervision of the President. I'm concerned about the Board Attorney.
Mr. Chair, does the number two qualify to cover that?
Yeah, that --
It does say, "The Board will determine compensation."
The contract provides for what they're compensated.
Correct.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, I think that that will create more problems as far as getting them paid, as far as stringing them out. I can't support that. And I guess that would be a, since this is the first reading, that would be something to take up at the next reading, the second reading.
That's right. That's the way I understand the process.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Board Policy 1310, Board Officers, First Reading. Now, do we need to read that one also? Well, it's in the packets. Well, I guess, would the Board want that read? Or it's in the packet? What would you like to do as a Board? It's in the packet, so, okay?
I've already read it.
Kenyatta?
I'm good. I've already read it.
Okay. John? Candace? Okay. All right. 1.73, which was added. That is, as I spoke earlier, and John brought up, the fact that Larry Ford had come on the Friday before the applications were due. They were due at 5:00 on Saturday. Yep, and they were, the notice said, emailed in. So, he showed up with a application, as did another -- application, as did another female. Now, I don't know who the other female was. She was told the same thing that Larry was told. And is there a motion here, John? Okay. I need a motion to...
So you're making a motion to approve adding Larry Ford to the interview list for tomorrow's meeting as a candidate for the open position of Board Trustee. Is that correct? Okay.
Bless you.
And is there a second to that?
Sir, a second?
Second.
And there is a second. Any discussion? Art?
I wish that, and it was unavoidable, but I wish that the name of the individual was not added because the decision really needs to be made. And the way that I've looked at it, the decision needs to be made regardless of who the individual is. It was clear in the instructions on how to apply for the opening that two individuals came to the campus, that the campus was closed. You know, that's unavoidable, but we had 17 individuals who emailed, who followed the instructions, who did what was necessary. And again, I hold Larry Ford in utmost respect and things that he's done. And, you know, served as, I'm a graduate of Westwood Heights. He was a long-term board member of Westwood Heights, and he did a lot of good with that school district. He's a long-term member of the GISD Board and did a lot of good work on that. So I hold him in the highest regard. But I don't see that he fulfilled the obligation of applying on time. So I speak against the motion.
Any other discussion? Art, I will add that at first, it really didn't matter to me whether we did this or not. But the more I thought about it, we had another female, who we don't know who it was, come at the same day, same set of circumstances. If we did this for this applicant, we would just about have to do it for all of them. And I think I agree with you that the directions were to email it. And for that reason, I can't support this either. Any other? Okay, seeing none? Seeing none? John, did you want to add something?
Nope, not yet.
Okay.
So this is ready for a vote. Item 1.73 was to add Larry Ford to the interview list for tomorrow's meeting for the candidates for the open position of Board Trustee. Trustee Reyes?
No.
Trustee Miller?
No.
Trustee Dodson?
Yes.
Trustee Daley?
Yes.
Trustee Walcott?
No.
Chair Swanson?
No.
There are four nays to two ayes, and the motion is defeated.
Just a comment. I know when I've looked at advertisements before, for instance, on MML, when they're advertising for positions, if the only thing you're going to accept is one vehicle for application, that usually says, "Accepted by email only." Okay, in this case, if somebody had mailed their... The question I would pose in response, and I don't need an answer for it, is if somebody had mailed their application in early to the college, would you have rejected it? Based on the argument we had here tonight, the answer is yes. So I think the wording in the advertisement that we put out with how you're going to apply needs to be a little clearer, a little bit more clarification.
The deadline was unambiguous. But he didn't turn it in. Because the college was closed.
So if he couldn't turn it...
And that's his fault.
So if he couldn't turn it in, why didn't he email it directly after?
All I know is he was going up north, and I don't know the answer to that. But what I'm saying is, is if you're going to restrict yourself to one means of submitting an application, then in all fairness, you need to tell the applicants that clearly.
That's a good point.
Thank you. Item 12, President's Report.
Thank you. Vice President Roberts will provide an enrollment update. Very exciting news. Hot off the press, right? Yesterday's numbers? All right, good.
Good evening, everyone. Madam President, Chairman Swanson, trustees. Excited, today is, of course, the first day of our fall semester. So happy first day of fall. Excited to share with you some information on our enrollment for the fall. What you have in front of you is, of course, these are snapshots. And because we prepared these for you on Friday before the meeting, what you have is actually from 8:21, but I'm going to give you an update as well. Before you, what you have, of course, our enrollment for the fall at the time of this snapshot was up 15.8% over last fall. Total of 6,796 students in headcount, and duplicated headcount at that time. And our contact hours were up 11.8%. And I think that's cause for celebration. And because that was a snapshot from the 21st, I would like to share with you also the snapshot from the 24th. These come out every day. And so as of yesterday, these numbers look even a bit better than what we see before you today. So our enrolled number moved up to 6,946, which represents an increase of 18.3%. And our contact hours increased to 13.8% over last year. So we are, as they say, peacock proud and hyena happy about what's happening here at Mott. And I would be so remiss if I did not give just kudos and shout-outs to a number of individuals and groups. And so first, to Shonda, because she gave us an ambitious but attainable goal a few months ago. And we, you know, the team has worked very hard to get there. But she did some blocking and tackling for us and removed some barriers to help us to redesign the process, to streamline some things. And it really paved the way for us to really open doors of opportunity that will help to change lives in this community. So the first is to Shonda. The second is to Al Perry. I think he's still in the back. Al and the Student Success Services Team. Because I'm going to tell you, every single day, they have been working diligently at this. A special group, of course, the admissions and outreach team. And then every single faculty and staff member is an ambassador here. And they have all been sharing the good work that we've been doing here at Mott in welcoming students. So we are excited about what's in store and just excited to be able to share with you what we've accomplished thus far this term with our enrollment. So thank you all so very much. I do, I see ya.
John had his hand up, and then I had my hand up, and Kenyatta had her hand up.
Yes, sir.
This is really great, okay?
Yes, sir.
And one of the things that I'm trying to sort out in my mind is you had a rising, in the community college world in Michigan, you did have a rising tide that lifted all boats.
Yes.
And how did the boat that's labeled Mott Community College do against the other boats? Because on one hand, there are sister colleges, on the other hand, there are competitors.
Yes.
And is there any way that you can get some assessment of how we did vis-à-vis Brandex, whatever that is?
Sure, I will share with you that we should, of course, by your next meeting, be able to show you that comparison. We haven't reached the date of record yet for most institutions. Just about everybody, I think, is starting today. So they will begin reporting that data over the next couple of weeks, and we'll be able to show you how we're doing in comparison. Absolutely.
I'd like also to find out what's the breakdown of these 67. And again, outstanding, I'm so happy that our enrollment is showing the improvement that it is. What's the breakdown of in-person students versus the online enrollments? And then I have a couple, I don't expect that you have that.
I do.
Okay, then can you provide that?
I can. So for the fall '25, in-person, it's 50.3%, I mean, fully in-person. And then we have those courses that are in a hybrid modality. That's 38.5%. And then, I'm sorry, 38.5% is fully online. 11.2% of them are in the hybrid modality.
11.2?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Have all the students that we reported enrolled secured payment?
The number we're giving you today, these are enrolled and means they have a form of payment.
Okay. Okay, so there aren't any holds?
No, not, well, we don't have holds on these students. These students all have a form of payment.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Chair Swanson?
Yes.
I wanted to ask as well, on the line of what Art was speaking of, can you give a breakdown, because I know we are working on getting more men on the campus. So can we know what that number is? Has there been an increase? Are we still at the same place that we were before? Or where do we stand there? And then I know, as well, these numbers are wonderful. Congratulations to everyone who has played a role in getting us to where we are today. But I would like to know, for those students that are falling through the cracks, because I know there are some, could we also, like, know what are some of the barriers that still exist for students who are falling through the cracks? Or who may struggle and/or have fallen through the cracks?
Okay, I'm making note of those.
Okay, thanks.
Those requests.
So on the demographics for, we have, we can update those statistics for you. We provided the demographics that were specifically requested toward, at the beginning of the year. So we can update those to show how that may have changed. Are you asking for us to distinct, are you looking for male and female demographics?
Well, the male number was significantly low. And I think the last time we talked about it, we said that some efforts are going to go forth to maybe engage more men to become students. So I just wanted to kind of keep a tab on where we are in terms of male enrollment.
Overall male enrollment, are you asking for us to look at racial distinctions?
We could break it down further, but for now, male enrollment, because that was the significant population that we struggle with in terms of students on campus.
So we do have an updated fact book that's in process, very close to being ready for publication. So that will be distributed to the board as well. So that will be a good place to, if you have any other specific questions related to those demographics, then we can answer those. As far as the barriers go, we monitor, we have an early, I think you'd be interested in learning more about our early flag warning system. And we can put a report together for you, for the board, all of the trustees, that explains it in much more detail. And maybe you could just make a mention, talk a little bit about it at a high level, Robert. But this allows us to identify those students who are starting to show signs of struggle or even entering in, given the fact pattern and demographics and circumstances around a particular student. Even from the outset, we have a methodology and a system that allows us to see where they're at high risk. And so the remedy for those includes, it's a huge menu of choices of services that we provide, but primarily that direct one-on-one, hands-on relationship and face-to-face relationship with the student's advisor that's primary and first and foremost in helping to ensure the student's success. And we have an entire department, division, and staff and under the tremendous leadership of not only Robert, but Al Perry that does nothing but ensure that we are removing barriers and identifying those barriers before, in many cases, before the student even knows that they have them through this early warning system. So I think even a visit and spending some time in afternoon or something, we can set up a couple of tours so we don't have any sort of an issue with quorum. But we can spend some time at the Student Success Center, and you can see some of the work that's being done by the team there. It's truly extraordinary. So maybe, Robert, you could add a little bit more about the early warning system and other ways that we're removing barriers.
Yeah, so it really allows primarily our faculty members, when they're working directly with students, to essentially raise a flag if they see, you know, any pattern or any indicator that a student might be experiencing a sign of trouble. Those then go to our coaches. So the success coaches have an opportunity to then, you know, respond to any of those and to then follow up with faculty members, letting them know what's happening. And so this is an area where we're always focusing on growing and improving our ability to be more and more immediately responsive to the needs of students when those flags are raised.
And we have seen improvements in our persistence and completion statistics because of that system. And we've made more refinements to it just this year, since the beginning of the year, to make it even better and looking for even better results after those further refinements that we're making. So we're very focused. And I might also add, the Adult Student Success Center that we opened last fall, the first cohort was 230 students. And that is a prototype program that we will expand the structure of that program to include all of our students, adult students, eventually. But it's a special form of support services tailored specifically to our adult students. And we have seen higher retention, higher persistence. And we expect both of those to lead to higher completion rates than what we had had in that age group previously. So lots of effort going on in that regard. So back to your question related to demographics. We will prepare for, it's close to final. And as soon as it is, the board will receive the fact book as well as key performance indicators that I am tracking as part of my role. And I'll be sharing those with the board, hopefully, at next month's meeting.
So I would presume that our non-completion rate is probably fairly low?
Well, I don't have the completion, a non-completion.
Yeah, and I'm not looking for that tonight. I'm just saying that based on all the things that are in place, like the early flag warning and other things, I would presume that the non-completion rate is probably significantly low.
We're working on making it better.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we all set? Thank you.
And next, Dale Weho will provide the, no, new hires. I'm getting ahead of myself. Rebecca. Rebecca Martz will provide an update on our new hires. Sit tight, Dale.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I have four new hires to share with you from our last board meeting. First is Jimmy Baber in our Public Safety Department. He is a sworn police officer. And just a little background on him, he has a Master's of Science in Criminal Justice Administration and a PhD in Community College Leadership from Ferris State University. And he's worked in higher education as an Associate Dean and Professor. And his background also includes public safety roles as a police officer and a lieutenant. Next, we have Kent Towns. He is a Public Safety Officer, started in July. And he has a Bachelor's of Science in Business Administration, Exercise and Sports Science, and Secondary Education. He comes to Mott with many years of experience as a security officer. And he's also a driver's education instructor and retired from substitute teaching. Next, we have Stephanie Morris. She's our Risk and Safety Coordinator in the Office of Human Resources. She is a Bachelor's of Arts in Multidisciplinary Studies from Sienna Heights University and a Master of Arts in Leadership Organization from Sienna Heights University as well. She actually retired from General Motors as an ergonomist. And she's worked as an adjunct instructor delivering OSHA-compliant training programs to general industry participants. So we're really excited to have her in HR. And then finally, we have Chris Dusso. He's a skilled maintainer for Carpentry and Painting. And he has worked in the Fenton Area Public Schools and Maintenance. And before that, he also worked as the Maintenance Manager for Leisure Living Senior Communities. So that concludes our new hires. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Rebecca, wait a minute.
Yes.
Was I correct that you showed us two police officers that you'd hired?
One, one police officer and one public safety officer.
Okay, okay. So the the non-sworn is the public safety officer?
Yes.
Do they stay within that group? Or how does that work with them? What's their future?
Well, um, some of them go on to be a sworn police officer, but some prefer just to stay as, you know, a public safety officer.
Thank you.
It's up to them. Yeah, thanks.
Now it's Mr. Wayho's turn. Dale will provide.
Excuse me, Sean.
An update. Yes.
We met a gentleman earlier today who's in HR. I was looking for his information in here. Well, why is it not present?
So that actually, it it should have been, but was in oversight. But I will introduce Jim Mitchell. I don't have his bio with me. But Jim Mitchell has joined as Acting Associate Vice President of HR to help consult with us. We had a situation that was urgent upon Christie's resignation, and the HR department needed support of a talented individual with significant amount of leadership and strategic expertise in the area of human resources. And Jim has a consulting firm, has worked for many years, including most recently as the president of Lee Hecht Harrison and Adecco Corp. Companies in Canada, and a significant amount of experience in talent management and HR. And Jim has joined us as a an independent contractor consulting with our HR department that was in emergency need of significant support from a leadership perspective.
One other question. Will will opposition go out at some point in time for this position? Or will Jim be with us for a certain amount of time?
No, the position will be posted at some point in time.
All right. Thank you, Madam President, Mr. Chair, Trustees. You have my monthly reports for June and July of 2025. One is from the last month of our previous fiscal year, and the other July is the first month of our new fiscal year. The President and I have been working on the format for these because institutional advancement does more than grants. You're familiar with this layout here, which is what I usually focus on, which are the grants received during that month. But you're also going to see separate sections of this report for the Foundation for Mott Community College, as well as all of the government relations and lobbying work that I've been doing for the college with help from others. So for the month of June 2025, you have five different grants that came in. You can see that we received the Trio Upward Bound. That's a good chunk of change, four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. That was awarded on June the second. Upward Bound is a program that focuses on first-generation students and those that are in high school but are showing promise, but may need extra support so that they can succeed in school. This is actually year four of a five-year commitment from the federal government. Jordan, if you would scroll back left. The second grant is to the Flint and Genesee Literacy Network. It's called Maximizing Adult Education. It's from the Community Foundation of Greater Flint. Thirty thousand dollars received word on that, official word on June 10. That is a year-long grant beginning, or excuse me, July 1 of this year. And this is really focusing on the Literacy Network's New Volunteer Tutor Alliance, where they're recruiting tutors from all over the community to work at different locations to help people with their English skills. English as a second language, but also regular adult education. Jordan, if you'd scroll back. The next three are all workforce and economic development grants. That's the division at the college that will be managing these. The first is Mentoring and Leadership Make a Difference. This, I think, is our fifth year of receiving this grant from the Charles Stewart Mott Foundation, hundred thousand dollars. June 12 is when we heard that we would be receiving this. It's actually backdated in terms of its start date to April the first and goes through the end of March of next year. This supports students, young people going through the Flint Public Health Youth Academy, and they're from all of these other organizations that feed into that. So there's this Michigan Public Health Youth Academy. We, of course, have a local Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Greater Flint. And then there's some youth groups such as the Alpha Esquires, the Delta Gems, and others that feed students into this. Thank you, Jordan. The next one is Adult Education Family Literacy Act funding. This is from the United States Department of Education. This is our annual adult ed funding, two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. This is also a multi-year grant. I believe this is the second year of AFLA that we're receiving with two more years to go. This was awarded on June the 27. And then lastly, in terms of grants, individual grants for the month of June, we have one from Metallica. Those of you that are eighties babies know the band Metallica. It's through the American Association for Community Colleges, but they've partnered with the band. And it used to be that they would only give these grants to location cities where the band had performed or would perform. They have not done so in Genesee County, but they expanded it. They loved our proposal that we put in before. They denied that one because the band had not been here. But they kept us in mind, and they opened it up. And now we have seventy-five thousand dollars awarded at the very end of June. And this is going to go towards students who are pursuing welding, certified nursing. What's the last one, Jordan, if you could scroll a little bit, and public works? And again, that's a workforce grant. If you scroll down, Jordan, we can see the totals for the month of June. We've got nine hundred and three thousand, those five grants, just over, well, almost nine hundred and four thousand dollars. The fiscal year to date for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five was fourteen point six eight five million. Sean and I have also added the prior year column, so you can kind of see year over year. And we can maintain, monitor the variances. So you've got a pretty significant positive variance for the month of June compared to last year. For the fiscal year, we were down negative thirty-one percent. And that is in part because we had a very large grant that was a one-time grant for the twelve-and-a-half million towards the Proll Center. And then pending grants as of June 30 were eighteen total that we'd not heard about. And that grant total for those eighteen that we're still waiting on or were waiting on as of the end of June is almost twenty-two million dollars. So now we're going to move to the Foundation for MCC.
And if I could add just quickly, if you could go back, Jordan, I I think it's very important, and you mentioned it, but it's worth highlighting, that when we normalize for the twelve-and-a-half million dollar grant that came in for the Proll Center, and you you take that out of the prior year total, the Foundation has actually, or institutional advancement, I should say, under Dale's leadership, has has increased year over year roughly six million dollars in grant funding. So a six million dollar increase over the year before, when you normalize for that twelve-and-a-half million dollar grant for the Proll Building. That's a significant increase. So very well done.
Thank you, Madam President. We're gonna.
Yes.
Thank you. I want to mention again that Ann Rennie, the Grants Manager, is sitting in the back. And there's a reason why she got that lovely award from the President the other day. She provides a lot of great leadership. So this is the Foundation for MCC. We've come up with the categories, scholarship events, unrestricted dollars, other funds, and employee giving. You can see what we have there for the month of June 2025. Notably, under other funds, there's a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. That was a contribution from Dr. and Mrs. LaFia towards our Adult Student Success Programming. A hundred and seventy-five thousand of that was a single major gift from those individuals. Lynetta Coney's not with us tonight, but she is largely responsible for those relationships, the development of those with major donors. And I'll say that the President and others, including Lynetta, had lunch with the LaFias, which which sealed the deal on that gift, and it came in in the month of June. So bottom line for the month of June in those categories, almost two hundred and seven thousand dollars for the Foundation. You can see the prior year numbers for each of those lines. Obviously, some negative variances, some very high positive variances, because it's a small amount to a, you know, a larger amount, that hundred is, say, forty-eight hundred. The bottom line is that we are at, let's see here, two hundred and six thousand, two hundred and seven for the the year. And the fiscal year last year, the the President set us a goal to get over a million dollars. And we were able to achieve that with sixty thousand dollars to spare. So now, also for June, the government relations and lobbying, we're doing a lot more of this. And it's not just me. It is the President, other members of Executive Cabinet, and people at the college that are making this happen. So month of June, we've got state-level activities listed in one category, then federal level. You know, from the resolution you passed, that we get a fair amount of support in terms of programming and funding from the state and at the federal level, that all of it's important. So we've got to lobby at both. We had eleven letters that were sent or emails from the President's office. These were related to the Flint Promise Zone and Pell eligibility. There was concern if they change Pell eligibility at the federal level, that that would affect the ability of Promise Zone scholars to come to the college and go to U of M Flint and to Kettering. Meetings held with state legislators and or their staff, we had five. The topics are there. Obviously, the state budget is something of a strong concern to us. And of course, Michigan Reconnect and the other programs that help our students come here. Other meetings, there were none in the month of June. Other activities, I drafted the initial resolution that you eventually adopted this evening for your consideration. So we put that down as an activity at the state level. It's also a federal activity, because it was both under federal. There were twenty-two letters. The President's office was quite prolific in the month of June, Flint Promise Zone again, but also the possible effects of all sorts of things at the federal level with the reconciliation bill, which ended up being called the Big Beautiful Bill Act. We had twenty-two meetings on that, or excuse me, letters. And then there were actually three meetings with federal legislators or their staff, no other meetings, and then the draft resolution. So that is IA for the month of June. If you would switch to July, Jordan, there are three grants, I believe. The first one goes to the Lenora Crowdy Family Life Center.
Sorry, I had a question.
Oh, sorry.
On the on the letters that were sent out. Did we receive any responses?
So that would be, do you want to comment on that, Madam President?
We we had, subsequent to the letters being being sent, we had a whole flurry of face-to-face and or Zoom call meetings with almost every every one of certainly our district legislators and and then many other, you know, broader, further legislators that we met with when we took a day to visit Lansing. And we met with a whole host of legislators then, both sides of the aisle, and telling the story about the importance of the community colleges and and in particular Mott. But we it's it's really a mixed bag. Some some every single office that we have reached out to, we we are continuing to have touchpoints with, primarily through Dale reaching out to the staff members with each with the offices of each of our our local legislators. So it's it's a mix, primarily in our with regard to our requests for specific support dollars, either capital outlay or appropriations, or some of the other earmark-type requests that we have in. Those, we we do have regular contact. We haven't gotten a lot of direct feedback from the legislators on the topics of, for example, the letter that we provided to you today that I I sent. So because none of not all of this has been settled through the the budget process, but our hope is that they have the sentiments and and concerns and desires that that we've shared with them so that when it comes time in their respective positions to make the case and stand for community colleges and funding, that they'll have this with them. So I'm not sure, does that answer your question?
In a manner. Have we moved the needle on any of these individuals?
Well, some of these were not, some of these, we won't know. In terms of of Pell funding and and some of these other federal funding questions, we we still, it's it's a work in progress. So we won't stop. We will continue to press for them. So I'll let you talk to the specific funding requests that we've made, because there we are moving the needle.
We are. So we have several what are called congressionally-directed spending requests, otherwise known as earmarks, which were gone for a while, and then they've reinstated them. Senator Peters has one from us around something called Mott Future Tech, which is a lot to do with the Regional Technology Center and the fact that we want to remodel spaces, add new equipment, develop new curricula, and basically meet the needs of future employers. You know, we had, we we know that something's eventually going to happen in Monday, regardless of the recent disappointment that the community feels. But whether it's there or anywhere else, we want to make sure that we're prepared for them. So anyway, that's a long way of saying, I think it's four point eight million dollar request to Senator Peters' office for that. Senator Slotkin's office has a proposal, congressionally-directed spending around the Wagner Building, where our workforce programming, if you go in there, you know it's dated. I know Trustee Wolcott has an interest in the elevator in particular over there. And so we have a multimillion-dollar proposal. I don't know the amount offhand in Senator Slotkin's office, which has moved forward. And then Congresswoman McDonald-Rivit's office, we submitted Mott Future Tech there, but they thought it would be better if Senator Peters took the lead on it. What I would say is that we sort of front-loaded the conversation, and I think that that's what you were saying, Madam President. We went to Lansing, we had Zooms, we had phone calls before some of these letters were even sent. So we had laid the groundwork. I will give you a couple of examples, if I could, on moving the needle. This comes out of really the Legislative Breakfast and being in touch with Senator Cherry multiple times. He was able to make sure that Mott College was included in the Senate Appropriations Bill, the Senate, State Senate, so that we would be able to take advantage of items funding, which is infrastructure funding, that normally we would not have gotten, because we've got the Proll project about to start, a major capital outlay. But he was able to pass an amendment to that budget that added Mott and one other community college that were not in it up until then. The other piece is, he saw our greenhouse and the needs during the tour on the date of the Legislative Breakfast. And he has put in what I would call an earmark, there's another name for it, in the Senate, State Senate's version of the state budget, agriculture appropriation, because he's the Chair of that committee, so that we can potentially get some money for the the Gorman Science Center and the the agricultural programming in the greenhouse. So I think we did move the needle on those. So I think we did move the needle on those. The conversations, almost universally, have been very positive. We truly are a bipartisan issue for most legislators, and I think we see that in the meetings. They'd already heard a lot about what was in the letter, so I didn't really expect an answer. And to the President's point, the state budget is still in flux, as you know, and we may not have one by the deadline. We may have a closed state government, but, so it remains to be seen how our individual legislators that we've lobbied will vote on budget issues related to the College, but they know that these things are very important to us. Okay. Any other questions on June? All right, I told you this would be the fun part. All right, July, three grants. Basic needs funding coming through the Crowdy Center from United Way. Got a great relationship with them, $10,000 basic needs funding, transportation, childcare, food, et cetera. Two more for the Workforce and Economic Development Division. One is called Employee, Employee Ed. This is from the AACC, funded by General Motors, $60,000. And this one is around career technical education and advanced manufacturing, which is a topic I mentioned earlier with that congressionally-directed spending request. So a lot of these relate to one another, even though they're separate. And then, Jordan, the last of the three, if you would scroll over, the $70,000. This is WIOA, so this is the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, I believe. It's federal dollars that come through GST Michigan Works, which is a multi-county organization for workforce development, $70,000. And this is for their out-of-school youth program, out-of-school youth, if the definition is still the same, at 16 to 24 years of age, and they're not currently either in high school or college, and we focus on trying to bring them to where they need to be. So for the month of July, the totals of those three grants, $140,000. First month of the fiscal year, that means it's also 140 because it's only one month in, and then you can see some of the variances there as well. If we can switch to the foundation for the month of July. Thank you, Jordan. Again, those, those categories are the same, scholarships, events, et cetera. One thing that I'll point out is that we got a very large gift in terms of a dental hygiene scholarship from an alumnus at the College who graduated from dental hygiene some years ago, and she gave us $175,000 of that 248, 200. Prior year, you see, we, we were down at 105,000. Again, that's a testament to the relationships that staff and IA, especially Lynetta Coney, as our foundation president, have developed. So bottom line for foundation, two, just over $269,000 for the month of July compares favorably to the prior year. Jordan, if you would move to government relations for July. Didn't have as much activity in terms of emails and letters to legislators. We, we did a lot of that in June and got ahead of it because we knew it was budget season and the reconciliation at the federal level. We did have two meetings with state legislators, same topics as you might imagine. We had one interesting other meeting, so you see that listed there, gentleman named Ryan Fink, who's with the State Department of Management and Budget. He is the person who helps score all the capital outlay requests from universities and community colleges, and there's a rubric that they have at the state level, so when we ask, for example, the Proll Center several years ago, there's a team that Ryan heads that scores it all. There's a political side of it as well, but there's the scoring piece of it, which is also important. We put in the medical complex, which I know is of strong concern to board members here as our capital outlay last fall. We didn't score as we would like, and so we pulled Ryan into a meeting with the team that's putting this proposal together again for submission in October, had a great conversation with him so that we can improve our scores on it. At the federal level, there were no emails or letters. We did have two meetings with legislators or staff, and that was, again, talking about those same issues that are in that letter that you have a copy of, and the, the federal changes document that is a three or four pager that goes with the letter. I think that's probably it, Jordan, if I'm, scroll down just a tad. All right. And then, of course, I re-edited the draft of that resolution that you passed this evening with feedback from Trustee Reyes at the President's direction. That completes my two monthly reports. Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, Aria L. And John Godola will provide an update on the completion of the letter of agreement with the faculty union, which was related to the, the reopeners that was left in the CBA at the last negotiation. John, Aria.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just one thing. Madam President, good letter. Thank you for sharing it with us. Had a lot of information in there, and to me, this is the kind of thing that we, the board members need to see, so that when we're talking with reps at both the state and federal level, we can make a plug for the right thing. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. We also supplied each board member with a, a proposed letter from the board member's perspective, so you had those as well. You're welcome. Go ahead, John.
Good evening. I'll try to be specific and provide you the facts. There was a negotiation with the Faculty Union. The current collective bargaining agreement was dated June 6 of 2024. There was a tentative agreement approved by the Board of Trustees on June 24 of 2024. That tentative agreement provided that by the end of each contract year, the College and the MCC EA shall open negotiations solely for the purpose of considering whether to extend the terms of the contract one or more years by mutual agreement, and/or to discuss potential wage increases. The negotiations were initiated. Those efforts were made in good faith by both sides. There was a bit of a history where grievance was filed. There was a request that that be held in abeyance, and I am pleased to indicate that a LOA was ratified that provided for a 3% across-the-board pay increase, an increase for the stipend amount, and that was built into the budget that was approved by this board on June 27 of 2025. And the conclusion is, a successful conclusion to these negotiations through good-faith bargaining exempts a productive and cooperative relationship between management and the Faculty Union, and that, in my mind, is great news.
Wonderful. Very good.
Good. Most of the time, and this is probably just, just different here. When I've seen LOAs done, they were, they've never been broad-sweeping LOAs unless they're dealing with non-economic issues, that they're usually, if, if there are an economic issue, it usually deals, it's dealing, it's shoring something up with individuals. And, and what I'm wondering about is, to me, this, I looked at this, and when you look at a, across-the-board raise, annual raise for an employee, for, that's part of the contract. It's not a separate agreement. And I'm just wondering, am I looking at that, you know, what's, what's the difference? Why is, an LOA is, I mean, you make an effort, for instance, when you go into bargaining, they are separate because you fold all the LOAs into the bargaining agreement that you're doing it with. So why wouldn't the, why wouldn't a decision on raises come back to the board for approval as an addendum to the, to contract?
So when the collective bargaining agreement was entered into, it was from 2024 to 2027 with the built-in reopeners for the annual review of the wages, and that's, that status is how this has been done before, that's the way it's been done. This present situation was handled as well.
But that's, that's a reopeners for negotiation. That doesn't, in my mind, that doesn't determine you, that you're bound to an LOA. And my question is, why was the vehicle for an LOA used as opposed to doing an addendum to the contract?
The budget at the time is not, it, it's approved after the fact. So what we do is, we negotiate the wages at the end, and so last year, it was the faculty negotiation, we had faculty negotiations, and we, at the time, the tentative agreement that was brought before the board, Section 11B, it says modifications of the language in Article 21. This agreement will be in effect as of the first day of July 2024 and continue in effect through the 30th day of June of 2027. By the end of each contract year, the College and the MCC EA shall open negotiations solely for the purpose of considering whether to extend the terms of the contract one or more years by mutual agreement. So this tentative agreement was brought before the board last year during a topical.
And it was approved.
And it was approved.
And the vehicle to make an amendment, the LOA is an amendment to the contract. So the vehicle that we use, the letter of amendment amended that portion of the wages, which is per the reopeners.
I don't think so. I think it's, the LOA, that's the reason you, when you go to negotiation, you do a zipper clause in there, which includes the LOAs that you put in throughout during the year.
Correct. That's the amendment.
They're specifically not part of the contract.
It's the part that amends the, the, it, it allows us to amend the, the terms of, of the contract, including wages, those terms that are named in the LOA reopeners.
When you read the contract language, the, the contract language was for reopeners.
Correct.
Okay.
And the vehicle to, to resolve the reopeners on an annual basis is an LOA.
Who says that?
In the contract.
It's in the contract?
And this has been the past practice.
We do this every year.
With the, we have contracts that are tied to exempts, Trustee Daley, and that would be Protac and S&amp;M. So for those particular bargaining units, we wouldn't have to go through the LA, the LOA process because they're tied to exempts. So if exempts are, if we receive across the board, they get across the board.
Okay. I mean, I just.
So this has been the past practice.
The way I, I just don't understand it because the, the LOA is a separate document. I mean, if you don't, they stand alone, if you don't fold them into the, the contract, when you renew a contract, if the LOA slides over, it's still valid. It's a separate document entirely from the contract. So we may have been doing it like that, but every place else I've ever been, when it, when they did wage increases, even if we had a negotiator, a negotiation for the out-years, an opener for the out-years, it was always done with an addendum to the contract.
We're following, yeah, I mean, we're just, we're following contractually what the pattern is that the contract calls for.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
That concludes the President's report, Chairman.
Okay.
Chairman Swanson.
There you are. Yep.
President Shonda, can I ask a question? I apologize, I should have asked Dale this question before, but I couldn't find my notes. Are we, have we access funds from MyLeap? Because I think in the past, we were receiving some funds, but I was just wondering, have we reapplied? Are we still receiving funds from, from that program?
Well, MyLeap oversees the, a number of the, the scholarship and, and Reconnect programs, so we can provide a full report of, of the total amount of funding that our students receive. So the, it would be student scholarship and, and funding through those programs that MyLeap oversees. So all, much of our, our state funding is through MyLeap.
Okay.
And we can provide a summary report of how much of the tuition assistance that our students receive is through one of the MyLeap programs.
Okay, thank you.
Board comment. Art?
First, I'd like to thank the College for the, the bag and shirt that we got, and I'd like to thank the President and EC for the nice birthday card and folder, that portfolio. It was very nice. This has been a, a long meeting, and, you know, so my 20-minute remarks aren't really going to impact anybody negatively. I think that we got a lot of stuff done. I'm glad that we were, that we worked through the things that we, that we did. There were a lot of good questions that were asked, and I always appreciate questions that are asked in a non-accusatory manner, and the answers that are provided in a non-defensive manner. It's, it, it makes things more pleasant to be at these meetings, you know, as, as a volunteer who, you know, works a full-time job, and then, and then comes to this. Nothing can be more frustrating than just sheer combativeness, and I think that, that we're getting the questions asked that we need to, and we're getting some answers. So I do appreciate that.
Wendy? Can you hear that?
I just want to say congratulations to everyone who was presented today, for the new hires, those who are doing exceptional things to just continue to push the College forward. I really appreciate that as a trustee, and I'm glad we can all, like, work together to move Mott forward.
John? A couple of things. On the legal bylaws, I can probably live with some kind of reporting mechanism, Jeff, on that as opposed to approval of the, of the process, just so long as the legal expenses get appointed to the board, reported to the board.
That's not a problem.
Okay. Second thing is, we had a, a good discussion tonight that was related to process of investigation of complaints. And one of the things that I've been rolling around in my brain, that I'd like for you to think about, the change, is I think it's, most of the time in the complaint process, the investigation process is separated from the person that's making the decision on judgment. Okay? Because of the fact that someone shouldn't be doing the investigation and looking at their own investigation to make a decision. That should be done by a separate party, I believe. The second thing, and related to that, is we need to figure out through the bylaw revision process in your committee, Wendy, how we're going to do this, because guess what, except for maybe you, ain't none of us really good, really qualified to be good investigators, and what that means. And we need to figure out, look at this, admittedly, this was probably a worst-case scenario to deal with, but how can we learn from it? And one of the things we can do, I believe, is take a look at our, the way we process the complaint, so that the complaint gets handled, the investigation gets done, it gets done by somebody that's competent to do the investigation. They make a recommendation to someone that's independent of the investigation on what the, the action's going to be, and that way, there's a little separation in there rather than having this one boiling pot that's everybody sticking their hands into. So just a thought. Thank you.
Okay, and I will add a little bit to that, John. The reason it took so long for these investigations was, we, when Kerry got on board, he dictated the process to do, the legal process to do them, and, and we followed those, and then as far as the decision, it was, it was Kerry's and mine that we made.
Well, I think we should blame Kerry.
Well, I try to blame him a lot, but it doesn't really, doesn't help matters. But, no, but that's, that's the way that went.
I hear you, but it really puts, I think, somebody that's not, I've done some investigations when I was in the service, and non-judicial punishment, and summary court marshals, and I was a provost marshal for a while, so I'm related, I have some background in it, and you need to separate the person that's doing the investigation from the person that's making the decision on whether we're going to go forward or not. That's the way the cops do it. They do an investigation, they send it to the AG. AG looks at it and makes a decision based on the investigation, is there merit in this? And we need to move more toward, I believe, towards that type of model rather than trying to do it ourselves.
With all that being said, you two are, you two are ready, huh?
Get ready, man.
Well, who will make the motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
It's all good, yeah.
Is it Wendy, or is it second?
All in favor? Aye. Aye.